You can only sign one verb.
Right.
So you can do two for large and three for medium.
What if you, for the city, you've been only able to sign one for each of us?
So this is your running at large with one of these people up so if you're more, it's completely simple.
Yeah, I work at large, it's the entire amount.
So we have.
At large.
Yeah. He's not for four, but just two for at large and one for medium. Oh, no, I'm sorry, you're right. No, it's like. You're right, yeah.
You're all in large.
Yes. Okay, there.
You're at large.
At large.
You guys know what's happening? You just need a place.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, is he not coming?
No.
Oh, okay, never mind, he's doing the other thing.
Sorry.
I signed one, yeah. Yeah, I thought he was done.
What is here?
Jeff, thank you.
Give you one more. He must be with Dylan's, he told me every black. It's all red. How would that like if we find them?
Actually, I'm embarrassed.
Come on.
We always.
It's not.
I sense a big one. What we're looking at it. Do you want to do it right?
Everybody is here except the mayor of San Antonio. So if you, we can either begin or wait a few minutes before there's others to arrive.
So.
Okay.
I can't hear you.
Councilmember Deuce is here, he's just not sitting. He got four.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and begin the meeting. Are these on? Is it working?
The chair, the chair of planning commission is going to open the meeting.
Your meeting?
Yes.
I'm so sorry.
No, don't worry. It's a little helter-skelter.
It's because I got a call from Mayor Douglas, it really threw me.
Yes, thank you.
My apologies.
The time is 6:02 and we are beginning the LDC City Council and Planning Commission Study Session on the LDC. And I will now defer to city staff.
Thank you, Chair, Commission, and City Council. Thank you again for two nights in a row. I know for council, it's kind of a long week so far, so really appreciate everybody spending the time to get this project closer to the finish line. So both of these groups last met at the beginning of June. And at the conclusion of that meeting, there was additional public outreach that was going to occur with both the general public, but also a focus with the development community. And we've been busy since that meeting, doing that outreach on the public draft that was made available in June. We had several meetings with the development community, we had several one-on-one offerings with them as well. And then a couple of weeks ago, we circled back with them to summarize the topics that we heard from them on the draft LDC. So tonight, there's a series of topics that were brought up through that outreach that have policy implications. And so we are really interested in walking through those topics with the Planning Commission and City Council with the hope to get to some level of consensus. And so that consensus could be either move forward with recommended changes, don't move forward with those changes, or let's table this conversation and talk about it at a later date. So that's what we're really trying to get to tonight on the various topics. Sun will be, Sun and Heather Vidlock will be going through the presentation and kind of tag teaming on this. There will be points in the presentation where we'll pause and ask the question for discussion. Chair Biltoff will help mediate that discussion, again with the goal to figure out if we have some sort of consensus on the issue. In addition to that, we also are going to wrap up the evening on the next steps. So what does adoption of the code look like? And then how do we implement the code? So we're going to spend a few minutes walking through that with the Commission and Council as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sun, our principal planner, and he's going to kick off the presentation for this evening.
Cool, thanks, Jeff. So if we look towards the agenda here, we'll first cover the project timeline, just to remind folks about where we've been, where we're headed, and really spent most, so bulk of the time on our key updates, walking through the different three sections of the code that we presented on, back in June. Again, to Jeff's point, talking about the tactical refinements, but also spending majority of the time, spending time discussing the policy topic discussions that have been summarized in the memo. And then we'll discuss the adoption strategy and next steps. So with respect to the project timeline, again, since the beginning of May or so, we've done a lot of public outreach, which I'll cover in the next slide here. But since then, we met on June 9th for the joint study session. And we've also had a follow-up meeting with the development community on July 14th. And so we had our first meeting with them, I believe, at the beginning of June, to just walk them through the public review draft, let them know how to provide feedback and comments. And then after they were able to provide comments in the month of June, month of May and June, we walked through them, we walked through with them on the refinements we anticipate making, which will be covered in this presentation as well. And so we, again, anticipate starting the adoption process come September, starting with Planning Commission on September 2nd. So with respect to the community engagement, we did have two in-person open houses at both Eagle Point and Buffalo Ridge Rec Center. We've also been attending the pop-up events and community events that the city has been hosting, like such as the Music at the Park, just to engage folks that have, you know, no idea what the land development code is, and just kind of get a pulse check about the recommendations that have been folded into the draft, and just to kind of start that initial community dialogue on the draft itself. Again, we had that two developer focused meeting, the first meeting focused more on the overview, and second meeting, walking through them, how we've listened and considered their feedback and the refinements we've made based on the feedback received. We also did have an online survey that just basically tried to be a virtual representation of what people saw at the open house, so just the high-level summaries and goals of the project, and main recommendations coming from the code update. Overall, we've had more than 150 direct comments on the public review draft, it's actually probably closer to 200 or more. And then in terms of just interactions with folks in open houses at the pop-up events, we've interacted with about 190 folks or so.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
By me. How many of those comments were not from developers or builders?
I want to say 90% of the comments were probably from the development community and 10% from maybe folks that we didn't recognize from those that attended our meetings. I would say the vast majority of folks that engaged, just like a resident, was probably from the open houses and the pop-up events. But I don't know if a lot of them really followed up in terms of providing detailed feedback on the code itself. So we'll go ahead and cover, again, some of the tactical refinements to the zoning district section before I pass it off to Heather here to take on the policy topics. So in terms of the tactical refinements, we did some general cleanup to the different references that are mentioned in the zoning district section. So reviewers have noted numerous broken and inaccurate cross-references that have been left since we were creating the draft, so those have been corrected for the public hearing draft itself. In the zoning district section itself as well, there was a table that summarized how all the former zoning districts would translate to the new lineup of base zone districts, and also how they implement the feature character districts of the comp plan. So, but we received numerous comments that the table was a little too confusing to try to summarize all that information and include all three layers of that information into one table. So we simplified the table, just clearly outlining how the current base zoning districts align with the new base zoning districts of the new code, just to simplify the table and make it easier to understand. Additionally, we also received comments requesting that more multi-unit residential building forms should be allowed in the mixed-use zone districts. So the public review draft, when we presented it last time, it only allowed the mixed-use building form, which would require active ground floor commercial uses and larger apartment complexes in those mixed-use districts. But what we've heard was the allowing the flexibility to accommodate more housing types in our mixed-use districts. So we've updated that to allow multi-unit, multi-unit housing types such as town homes and row homes as well, in addition to apartment buildings. So I'll turn it over to Heather over here to cover these next few slides.
Thank you. So with regard to building forms, we're going to be speaking to you about motor court developments and also build to rent. If motor court developments are basically a cluster of homes around a shared driveway, and currently in the draft code, these are not allowed, I'm going to show you something called green courts in a minute, which is what the code envisions as an alternative. But basically, we received feedback from the development community that we should be allowing motor courts. And motor courts have been constructed in Commerce City already. So the two examples that are on the screen are from Commerce City. Basically, what you see are homes oriented toward a shared driveway. So rather than having a front yard, you have the shared driveway, and it's a way to have your sewer and water lines and your driveway all be in the front of your home and have shared maintenance responsibilities. However, repairing those water and sewer lines in the future can be challenging. And so from a design perspective and a maintenance perspective, that's why we had considered not allowing them in the code. But it is an alternative that provides a lower, more affordable housing point, housing product type. And so the next slide shows what the code envisions as it's currently drafted. It envisions that you'd have your homes oriented on a green court. So rather than the shared driveway, you'd have green space between the homes, and then you'd have an alley to provide access from the rear. This is, this is something that is used in other parts of Denver and in other parts of the country to provide a place for common area in the middle of the homes and a place for, you know, kids to play and to have more recreation opportunities. And that was, that's why this was seen as desirable. However, if we were to allow motor courts, we recommend that we have certain design parameters around those. Basically, we're suggesting a 20-foot driveway width and a requirement that you can't have more than 50% of your housing within a specific project in this development type. Your driveway length should be no more than 150 feet from the nearest street edge, and the front doors should face the street. So you should orient your homes so that the front door faces the roadway rather than the driveway. In terms of driveway maintenance, the shared driveway should be privately maintained with clear maintenance and repair provisions. And then you'd have a limit of four structures, so four single unit or four duplex structures. So at this point, we wanted to pause and pose this as a question. Should we allow only the green courts, which are the homes clustered around the shared open space, or should we allow motor courts with those provisions that I just described? And if we don't have consensus tonight, we can delay this topic for future discussion in a more in-depth manner. But again, this is something that the development community raised, they've been building this motor court design in Commerce City, and they'd like to continue. So how would, how would the council view this? And I'll pass it off to the chair to kind of moderate the discussion so that we can hear from everybody this evening.
Sure. So I'll start with the planning commissioners. Are there any comments from any of the planning commissioners related to this comment?
Yeah.
We'll just start next, Commissioner Schechter.
Well, I'd like to know what you have to say.
Oh, please use the microphones, too.
Okay. I tried to really speak loudly. I'd like to do what he has to say because he actually lived like maybe in that exact picture that we just saw. Sorry, I didn't know if you want to be outed like that, but in one of the carriage homes.
Sure, so I'll save my comments till the end. The remainder of the commissioners make their comments first, and then, yes, I'd like to make comment at the end, so I'll save. Commissioner Sanchez, I think I saw your.
Yeah, not a comment, but actually, is this, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. A question, if you go back to that last slide, if you compare the recommendations with, say, the photo that's on the top, what are the differences?
So the homes that are on the bottom are duplexes, and the homes that are on the top are single-family.
My question is how do the, like the maximum driveway with, with all the recommendations, how those compare with the?
Oh, how do those compare to the design standards? Yes. So basically, we found examples that meet these requirements, and so these would meet that 20-foot driveway and the 150-feet length, the 20-foot width, the 150-foot length, and the maximum of four. Where they don't always meet is the front door orientation. And so it's a little bit harder sometimes to have your front door oriented toward the street when you're on one of the shared driveways.
Thank you. Commissioner Ingelson? Did you have a comment?
I did.
I was looking at, has people's hands raised? I was trying to play baseball empire here.
Okay. So on that bottom picture, there's a long driveway, right? And then the houses go off the driveway, right?
Right, they gain access, you see their, you see their driveways into their garages. So there's a shared drive in the middle, and then you see the lighter colored concrete
Which is their.
Is their, their private driveway into their home.
Okay, so personal preference, I like the bottom one, but I do not like the top one, I think it's too much in a small period. And then on the other picture, I think the green court would be a great idea instead of doing the, what did they call them?
Motor courts.
Yes. Okay.
Commissioner Kiefer.
Thank you. First I had a question, I got it. Thank you. Oh, I grabbed it. Heather, on the, stated that the, one of the use cases, the purposes was that the sewer and the water was going to be up front, and that was there, there seemed to be advantage to this, is that the case?
Yes, it's a more inefficient, or excuse me, it's a more efficient layout to put your, your water, your service lines for your water and your sewer in the front in that shared driveway. And so it consolidates the infrastructure to the front, and it allows a more affordable development option for, for developers, which could relate to more affordable housing for the end consumer.
And so my curiosity there is, how is it different than what we currently do in my home, in my street, that our water runs in front and then the sewer, I've seen where it's in the middle of the street? How's that, how is that different?
Well, you're still, you have the shared, the shared driveway, so you have less street infrastructure, and you have the sewer, yes, the sewer and water lines are still in your front when you're fronting on the street. But as opposed to the green court where you have alley infrastructure and then your green court in the front, you have kind of double infrastructure to get access to the site.
You also have like a shared private main that goes from the street through the shared driveway or the private alleys. As opposed to like traditional development, you have the house facing the street and you have a service line going from the main to your house. It's not shared, it's owned and maintained by one property owner. This, in these situations, you have this quasi-private main coming off of the main in the street that, that's tapped off then, so you have a lot more private infrastructure. So like, the benefit from the developer's perspective on this is, is that you can get more houses with less infrastructure, so there's a, there's a cost savings there, and you can also get more houses within the same amount of space potentially than you would with a more traditional conventional layout, which is one house per lot and each one lined up in a row. So that's where I think, why it's popular with the development community is because it's, it's more cost-effective for them to build and they get more yield out of it in the same amount of land. Arguably, arguably, they get more yield out of it in the same amount of land as they would with conventional type design. So I had two points to that, so you raised new concern for me. Since there is private infrastructure now, and you said there was going to be something in place that wasn't clarified necessarily, who's responsible for that or how it's taken care of, what would be the way? Because if you don't have an organization, HOA or whatever it would be, to handle that, it would be difficult to get to. Yeah, I, I believe the majority of these are, there's, there is some sort of agreement in place with HOAs, whether they're sub HOAs or sub-districts, or whether the overall HOA takes care of it, I'm not sure, but this would codify that requirement. So that's an extra level of legal protection, that if, if this were to be developed, we would make sure that there's easements and, and shared agreements in place as part of the subdivision process and building process, so there's a legal thing recorded against the properties, so people know more upfront about what the responsibilities are in the situation is. And could that come to planning and city council to review that before I went, or just stay within planning? I think we would, I don't know if those agreements would come to Planning Commission and City Council, but we would probably like look to maybe at least have a baseline template that they would have to follow. I'm looking at the attorneys because some of these, these are private covenants usually, and so we don't necessarily review the private covenants because it's not something the city enforces, and that's, I think, where we would probably want to work with the attorneys because if the city is not enforcing the regulation, then does the city have a role in reviewing and approving that, other than making sure it meets basic requirements that we're trying to establish within the code? But I'm going to turn it over to the legal eagles to help answer that question.
Yeah, let me see, let's see, is this microphone on? There we go. Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think with the proposal of it being a private driveway privately maintained, the infrastructure would also be private, so there would be some form of agreement, the city wouldn't be a party to it, so the city wouldn't have any enforcement rights or enforcement responsibilities on the agreement. I think we would want to set some basic parameters if council and commission wants to go this route, there should be some basic parameters on what the obligations are, and like Jeff said, we would look to make sure that those minimum standards are met in any agreement. It would probably be an easement, detailing cost obligations, maintenance obligations, and things like that. But since it is on private property, private main, the city wouldn't have any direct obligation or responsibilities to it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That does concern me, just I've seen how things get maintained and how they're funded and whatnot, and I think leaving it open to interpretation and allowing private sector to take care of that concerns me quite a bit. Finally, my other portion that I want to discuss was the, you were saying that the more efficient use of space, which I agree, that's what it would be, but I run every evening and I go through a section, I think might be the top one, through my neighborhood. And so people seem to have more than two cars these days, it seems to be more and more common. And so since they have a lot of those along the way, there's, the cars are all along the street, which is not a problem for me at one in the morning when I'm, when I'm running, but if someone's, kids are walking around, the more cars you have there and it's tight corners, the higher chances of problems are going to be there, and just a small example is children walking around. But when you have more and more density like that without the ability to park in front of your home, it's going to be harder and harder to find places to put these cars, and it's going to get a difficult situation there, and so that is a concern that I'd like to raise with this. And that's what I have, thank you.
So yes, speaking to this as someone who's actually lived in one of these houses, this is actually what drew me to Commerce City, it was the price point of this house. But then, one thing that I would caution with this, it was the amenities that were available near this type of house. So if there was this type of development, it should have extra open space requirements related to that, that are developed, not just open space that's held as corners that are just raw land. The other thing, just related to my experience with that, there was a separate sub HOA that was managing the front part of the property, so it was a share, there was a fee that we had to pay into that, but then there was a management company that managed it. And actually, I really enjoyed living in that house. I didn't have a bad experience with it, it was just, it was a three-story house, and during COVID, my son has special needs, and we're like, in the long term, just having a three-story house with someone with us, we're 80, does that make sense? So another point that Commissioner Kiefer brought up is about, well, parking on the street, but there should also be limitations to parking in the shared drive, because I believe that that's one of the hot buttons that I had heard. So it's. It just. I'm trying to think how to state this politically, it's working with, working with your neighbors, it's, it was the, the design of it, it brought the community to get together. So I think there was some things that were maybe seen as are, that were unintended consequences. So I think there was some things that were maybe seen as, are, that were unintended consequences. I think being in close proximity with your neighbors, you had, I had a good relationship with everyone there. So it built a community with us in that subset.
Would, would kids play in the shared space there?
Yes, they became an area for activity, similar to the, to the other, the green space-focused. Because imagine a bunch of kids, shared driveway, basketball goal comes out, playing soccer in the drive. It was just an area for shared activity with the kids. So it's something, like, looking at this, not everyone living in that space. Oh, it might not be for everyone. But I believe that there are people that this would serve in the community. It's a, it's a different gap, and it's a different means to come in the community. Because like I said, this is what drew me to Commerce City. And I had relocated from Thornton in 2019, and moved into one of the carriage houses right over by the coffeehouse. So I really enjoyed my time there. Okay, we'll defer to City Council, Commissioner, Councilmember Douglas.
Thank you, I'm so sorry that we had to arrive late. But I see that you're running the meeting tonight, so I was curious, did, did you say you still live there, or are you living somewhere else?
Oh, we, we moved over off of 111th and, and Mobile. But we still live in the, in the reunion area.
Right, right.
But it wasn't because, it was the constraints of the house, but it wasn't this, it wasn't related to the, this motor court, motor court home arrangement.
So when, so the driveway was where everybody congregated then? With the garages in the back?
Yeah, people would, people would open up the garage doors. Some people set them up as like media centers, and would have, have sports games on. Because at that time, reunion fireworks were right across the street. So we'd all get together and watch the fireworks, and, I mean, we were right there. So it was an opportunity for shared community in the space. And then reunion having the shorter fences, like, we knew everyone very, very well. So it was something where, I know people have block parties, street parties, but this is, as things are very tight, you have to sometimes communicate with your neighbors. Like, I'm going to have a truck dropping something off, like, it, it's another opportunity for shared connection in the, in the neighborhood.
So what I'm seeing is that we've got a lot of that already. And it seems like that's the continued path that developers want to go. But I concur with Commissioner Eggleston and, and Ryan, what's your last name again? I can't see that far across the, the way. I, I, I think that we just can't have a whole community. We've got so much potential here. And I know that there were a lot of people who saw those in Green Valley Ranch at first, and were just like mortified by them. All of a sudden, here we are, we have them. And, and, but it just doesn't seem like that trend is going to stop. And so I really think we need to get a handle on this, and, you know, diversify. The other thing I heard about with the mixed use is that they're trying to do the same thing that they did when they brought forth reunion ridge, where it was supposed to be mixed use with commercial. And then the developer wanted just mixed use as residential with no commercial. So their idea was a mixed use, which they sold to the council at the time, was to just have a variety of, of homes available. And then, of course, what they're also trying to push now is rentals rather than, than homeownership. So that's all I have to say, and I'll pass whoever else has something to say.
Councilmember Dukes?
Thank you. So to the question around, is this a recommendation I would recommend? I, I'd say yes. I think both models, I, I think the green space, which we see in Brighton and, and Thornton, and also some, a lot of that in, in Central Park. I do see the carriage homes, and you know, when I talk with residents about the carriage home, I, I have a number of residents that say, hey, that's what moved me from out of state to here. A lot of folks that I've talked to that live in there, they, they like the fact, things that you hinted at as the community, but also the smaller backyard, like the, they can maintain it. Then I've also heard residents who've moved from like Frontera to the carrot tones, where they had a bigger house, and then they actually moved one of their parents in on the first floor. And so for me, it's around a diversity of housing options that we want to provide to the residents, and ultimately have an opportunity for them to decide if this is what they want. I do agree with Councilmember Douglas around the, when Green Valley Ranch first opened up, I thought they were too close. And I think what we've done, or these, these limitations that have them a little further apart, actually cosmetically looks better, but also provides a little more safety. So for, and then the other piece I do like is the orientation for the front doors facing the street. I think that's a, a good, good model. And the last thing is, these, I do like the street with the longer side, or the longer drive-in. I think that it, I would prefer that as well, but I know some people, folks want the cul-de-sac feel. You do see a lot of that street in Aurora, especially Wesley Creek. And the parking, the parking is, I mean, the parking is a challenge either, wherever we go right now across the city. And so it's something we can think about addressing in a different, in a different manner. But I, I think both are, I recommend both.
Councilmember Kim?
Reunion Ridge at the top, Buffalo Highlands at the bottom, that's what I see. My question is more so for Mr. Han. Mr. Han, with regards to the recommendations or the ask on here, are these the, are these numbers based off of what the feedback was given? Or is that based off of, or, sorry, that must be, sorry, Ms. Bitloch, I think you're the one that probably answered this too. Is that based off the feedback given from the feedback you guys have received? Or is this more so the, the, the quantifying data that is something that you guys put together?
It's primarily from our observations of what's on the ground today and research on peer cities. And so one clear example of the driveway, driveway length, the 150 feet from the nearest public street edge is for fire safety and access. So we just started looking into kind of other peer cities, and have they, how different ways they've been accommodating these products. And, and that's how we've landed on these standards. Yeah, this.
And then the other question too, is, is it more so to say that we have to choose one or the other? Or is it, can there be a mixture of both between a motor court and also a green court?
What we're proposing is the green courts would be in the code, and we're asking for council's feedback and commission's feedback on should motor courts be allowed as well. So if you agree that motor court should be allowed, then we would write in the code what those standards are that we just described.
Okay, can you go back to the slide? There we go, all right. So then my, I, I, I don't have any problems with adding a motor court home in. However, with that design, I would, I would request that as far as the max number, where it says cannot be more than 50%. I mean, is, where, where's that 50% coming from? Are we trying to say that, hey, if we build 100 homes, 50 of those can be motor court homes, or?
Yes.
And that's based off of what?
That's, that's just a reaction to not wanting to have a predominance of these in one particular neighborhood.
So then I would request that we lower that percentage.
Okay.
To more, closer to, say, 30%.
Okay.
Of the proposed housing within projects. And as far as the, the width is concerned, driveway, 150 feet from nearest public edge. Okay, I think that's, that's fine. And then I would, basically what I'm looking at more so is to, not so much of the fact of what, and, and I appreciate Commissioner Bitloch's, Garrett's, information that he provided, I'm going to mess up your last name, and my apologies, regarding that, that type of atmosphere, environment, because of the fact that, I mean, to his point, you get that neighborly feeling essentially. But then you get all these kids together, you get all these people together, whatever the case, it's awesome. I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't discount that at all. But I think what, more so what you see with the, the length, I mean, that obviously keeps it more open. So I mean, I don't, I don't see why we couldn't have a mixture of, you know, of both. But I would just, again, request that the max number be reduced percentage-wise.
I'm okay with that. I agree with that, if it's 30%, just getting feedback on what's realistic. But I like the idea of like not being oversaturated.
Mayor Protem Noble?
Thank you very much. My stepdaughter lives in a carriage home by reunion coffeehouse, but she lives on a straight street. She doesn't live in a cul-de-sac. And the people who live on the straight street consider that to be more advantageous and adding value to their homes, interestingly enough. I know from some of my residents who've lived on the cul-de-sac, that particularly when there is more people living at the home that have vehicles such as rental rooms and so forth, because the homes are conducive for that kind of thing, actually, the way they're laid out, is that it gets kind of chaotic in the, in the cul-de-sacs, for sure. I very much like the green court idea. I'm not clear on where the street is. The, the slide says that there's a, a street, is it going around the green court?
Yes, so if you look at the image on the far right, for example, you'll see that the homes are fronting along the green court. But on the backside is kind of where an alley exists, where you get vehicular access.
And then the street.
Because I, I am.
Right, and the street is on the south to provide access.
Okay, great. I'm very supportive of more density when there is more green space. So that you don't feel claustrophobic. It's, it's a, the carriage homes are a complicated issue, and complicated by the fact that, that their siding is part of their affordability too, I suppose. But at the same time, it's one of the challenges for Commerce City. And upkeep in the heat of this area is a challenge. And that's not being addressed by discussing the carriage home look. I know the paseos in Buffalo Highlands, but those paseos are not 20 feet wide, are they? Currently, a 20 feet, is 20 feet a typical street width?
It's a typical two-way driveway.
Pardon me?
It's a typical two-way driveway width. Yeah, it's not a typical street width, but it's a typical.
Are the paseos 20 feet wide in Buffalo Highlands?
We would have to look that up, we would have to look that up.
Okay. That's the, the best way that I can get a picture of it, is whether, whether they are. I don't believe that you can have two cars side by side, driving past each other.
You definitely can't.
Do you recall?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Kim? I don't think so either. But they're, they're lovely little streets. In the way you described the motor court homes, how do you avoid having eight homes on a cul-de-sac? Like a four duplex structure with a total of eight units on a shared cul-de-sac kind of situation?
Well, they probably wouldn't fit on the cul-de-sac, but they, the, the bottom image is duplexes. So there's four duplex units for a total, four duplex structures for a total of eight units on that shared drive. But it's more of the linear pattern, as opposed to more of the cul-de-sac type shape.
Okay, so their doors face the paseo? It doesn't need to face the main street then?
Well, our, our, our suggestion is that they'd be required to face the main street. But the way that it's shown in this, in this example, they're facing the, the paseo or the shared driveway.
I don't see.
The ones on the end, on the, on the south end, face the street.
I could see on the main street that they would face the street. But I don't see, as you work your way up the other three duplexes, how they would actually face the street.
Yeah, I think we would, we would draft the code that the, the, the units adjacent to the street have to be oriented to the street. To your point, you can't, the interior units can't do that. Or if they could, it would be pointless, because you couldn't see it. So, yeah, I think that the key is having the street face, the street adjoining units being the ones addressing the street. So we're not getting the sides and rears of buildings, we're getting the fronts of those buildings.
Okay, yes, that makes sense. And I agree with Councilmember Kim about reducing it to 30% of the housing. But I would like something done about the siding. Is that part of land development code too?
We, we have that topic later on this evening.
Thank you.
Mayor Douglas?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I appreciate this discussion and, you know, living in, living in the air for 21 years and seeing what was built there before, they had row homes, and then the carriage homes came in. So my issue with the carriage home is, you have four in that area. If we're going to continue to have those, I think there should be three. Spread them out, give a little distance more inside, because I drive by there a lot. And people do not park inside in the garage. There's always a vehicle out in that area. And, you know, it's just like living in an apartment, you got to get to know your neighbors and all that stuff. And people do, which, which is great. I mean, that's the whole, whole reason people like these as well, because maintenance of yards and all that. But I, I think if we're going to continue this, we have an opportunity to change the modeling. I think we should have three and not four in the cul-de-sac. And then I do like the green court homes. I think that's, I've, I've seen those in Colorado Springs. And they have kind of like a communion living space. Some of them have it where there's a, a little house where they can get together and cook, things like that. But I'm, I'm fine with the, with the green court homes, having that, and that makes come in. I'm okay with the 30%. I would say 25, but I'm, I'm okay with 30%. And then as far as the streets go, I know down at reunion ridge, they had asked at the time, when they were building that community, to actually make the roads more narrow than, than, than the normal, because the normal width is 54 feet with the neighborhoods, that's what they were. They asked for a reduction. I think it should go back to 54, because when you drive from certain areas, it's tight. And cars aren't getting smaller, they're, they're still, still large. So if you have a car on the side of the road, and then you, cars coming down, people should just slow down when they pass each other. Some tend to think they have to move over in someone's lane, you know? But I think we need to make sure we have the right widths of the streets as well, especially on the curved areas. We have areas where people shouldn't be parking, and they're, they're parking. And that's a problem too, because they can't get into the area. So if, if we have an opportunity, which we do now, let's, let's go ahead and tweak some of this and make it more conducive to the people who, who live there long-term. Thank you. So, yes, one, and then the change with two, and the percentage, thank you.
Councilmember Teeter?
I wouldn't live in those houses. But I, I don't have a problem with them being there. And I'm, I'm good with the 30% that they talked about. I like the 54-foot roadways. I definitely would want a, a fireproof fence dividing the houses as close as they are. Steel, not plastic, not wood, and hardened siding. But you said that's, that's not a, it's going to slow down a fire from happening. And, and it's, as long as there's not more than 35%, or, or it's, I guess it would be okay.
I'll ask just the Planning Commission any follow-up comments from what we've heard. Commissioner Kiefer?
So, the discussion with Councilman Dukes and Kim brought a thought for me, and if it's out of scope, I understand, I can stop it there. Are we planning for it all, the, the traffic situation moving forward from that? Is there any correlation between how many homes were built to what we currently have for infrastructure and how it's going to be handled financially to expand that or handle it? It seems as though right now, for the reunion area, which is mostly seems to be, the northern area, seems to be where it's being discussed about, there's two ways out. There's highway going south, there's highway two, and there's Tower Road. Tower Road in the morning is packed. I fortunately live and have worked from home. My wife has to leave in the morning and she says it's god awful. And putting a higher density in without having any plans for that seems concerning to me. If we're just doing things now and then paying for the price later and saying, oh, I know what we can do, because we can only build six lanes across on Tower. Is there any kind of, is that within scope in this discussion or?
Yeah, the, the transportation master plan is going on right now, and that's going to come to Planning Commission, I believe, in...
October.
October for at least a preview of it. And so that's the, that's the main long-range tool that we use to plan for the mobility needs of the community, and so it's going to look at those factors and understand where improvements need to be made. Like land use and transportation are inherently linked. The way we design our neighborhoods is also linked. The how, how many, how far we spread things out is linked. It's all linked together. So, the transportation plan will be a very important document for the community, because it'll be our blueprint on how we are intending to support development and moving forward within the community and how we invest in our transportation system to support that development. Yeah, absolutely.
So is there a way to determine, I'm just random numbers here, if you had 100 homes, there's going to be 200 cars, do we know what the maximum capacity we're able to put out there is? And then if we're going from 100 homes to, say, 130 homes, if we did 30%, it's not the correct math, but close enough, could we charge additional fund? Could there be a fund to take care of the future development, to have them pay into it, since it's going to be...
Yeah.
It's putting a higher stress on our, our infrastructure?
Yeah, we, we already, we have an impact fee, which is, is, is to pay for these regional improvements, and it's a per dwelling unit fee that we assess on all new development, both residential and some commercials. Some of the commercials exempted out for economic development reasons, but that's what the impact fee is, is charged for. And so Council's been talking about that particular issue for a number of months now, so it's on, it's on everybody's minds at this moment.
Are we?
Okay, thank you.
So, Chair Piltoff?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you were going to continue to ask for closing.
I was just, closing on the, from the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I have a question. When you talked about earlier about having one main for the water coming up the driveway to supply four homes, is that going to be adequate? You live there. Did you ever have a problem with water pressure or water?
No, we didn't have any issue with water, but it would be something to consider if there was a replacement to that. Infrastructure would impact all four homes in the, in the shared drive.
Yeah, yeah, and Heather was just, there's multiple ways to do that. It doesn't have to be a shared main. Oftentimes, there's, there's individual service lines, but then that's where, if you cram those individual service lines in a smaller area, it becomes difficult to service those over time. But the Water District has standards around what you can and can't do, and there's, there's limits to lengths, dead-end lengths of, of both public mains and private mains. So there's a whole universe of regulations around that. But I think when we did engage with the Water District about this and the Fire District, the 150-foot limitation seemed to be within the realms of, of the, the standards that are in place for, for, for dead-end and shared-type infrastructure.
And then Mr. Brazil. I saw, Mayor Protem Noble, you had your hand up?
A final question on the green courts. Is there a reason that there isn't a driveway behind the homes and that the green court has no road around it?
The green court would have an alley behind it, or, I mean, in the green court figuration, configuration, the homes have an alley behind them. So it's a little hard to see in this diagram.
But do they need a street that loops in the middle around?
No. The alley provides access and the garages are in the back of the homes.
Okay.
And then the public street in these diagrams would be on the bottom.
Okay, could you go back to the detail again? On, for the green courts? Is there one for the green courts?
That's what this is.
That's, that's what this is.
Oh, just the drawing?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a sidewalk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, and Mayor Protem, I, I believe my understanding would be similar to what it's in Bell Creek. It would be the diagram that's on the left, but in Bell Creek, they don't have the houses on the side, but there's the alley behind the house. I believe that's what we're seeing, correct? There would be, there would be an alley on three sides that connects to, to a surface street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Chair, there was a couple of recommendations that came out of the discussion, and I just kind of wanted to make sure that there's alignment with, with that. So would you mind if I kind of walk through this just to get some head nods really quick?
Sure.
Okay.
Sorry, one more, one more.
Thank you. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, I, I wanted to make a couple more points, but I also wanted to ask a question. The question is, I had never considered, like, three instead of four. Is that a possibility? Because, I mean, Commissioner Kiefer brought up the traffic issue, and no one ever takes that into account when they're, when they're, it doesn't seem anyway, the, the traffic impacts of building more densely populated. And so what would be the ramifications of saying that you only can do three instead of four?
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's a design issue, but it's, it, it kind of makes it a little bit less, from the, from the builder's perspective, a little less efficient, but we do require traffic studies. We do require that our roads are able to do this. I would say a four, a fourplex or a threeplex on a, on a shared street or alley is not going to move the needle any, in any way significantly as it results in traffic or anything like that. Local roads, the, the rule of thumb for, like, transportation planning is, is up to, I believe, like, eight to 10,000 trips a day per, per lane. And so local roads have a pretty big capacity, and when you spread it out, there's also considerations about access into the space that we have as well. And so when we design our, when, the neighborhoods in Commerce City that are being designed are being designed to be more accessible in a variety of different ways, and that supports, that supports the level of traffic that's being put on these roads. No, nowhere, I don't think we are seeing anywhere where we're having capacity limitations on local roadways themselves. It's where you start shoving traffic onto the collectors and the arterials during peak hours, that's where we have pinch points and capacity and so forth. But on the local road infrastructure, there's enough permeability with the street, our street standards and our street layouts, that, that what we're talking about here is not going to move the needle on, on that.
Yeah, it's just, so...
Yeah.
No matter what, you add population, you're going to add to the, those collectors, because it may be okay within the neighborhood, but it's the collectors that I'm talking about...
Yeah.
That, and to me, the traffic studies are, are great, but they don't always reflect reality. They, they just don't. It's great to have it on a piece of paper, but when, when the rubber meets the road and you're in the midst of it and you're dealing with it, it, the study doesn't really mean anything. So, sounds like considering three is off the table. I would say 25% instead of 30%, because it can tell you, you give somebody an inch, they're going to take a mile. So you say 30%. 30% is a third, but 25% is a quarter. And so to me, limiting it to 25% would be much smarter. And I have seen the green courts. There's one in Westminster, a whole subdivision, and it's, it's beautiful. Plus, they have retail around it, they have an event center that is always rented out. And so building community from that perspective is, is a much better way of doing it. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to interject.
Sorry, I stepped on your...
Mr. Brazil, if you want to continue.
Yeah, so I think what we're hearing is that there's a general consensus that we should allow the, the, the motor court option.
Yes.
Okay. There were other, there, there seemed to be a consensus that we should reduce the amount from 50% to 30%. Is that... Okay.
Yes.
What about 25%? Okay, so I think more consensus on 30 over 25. There was discussion about having reciprocal increase in park or open space as part of the discussion for these green court, or, excuse me, the, the motor courts. So making sure that there's, there's usable public space within these, these neighborhoods in exchange for this type of development, okay? There was some conversation around parking on the, the court versus the, the alley or the straight configuration. And I don't know if we have an answer, but is that something that you want us to look into? Either, either prohibiting parking or making sure that there's enough, if they're going to do parking and that, that there's enough dimensionality in front of the garages to accommodate that parking?
Councilmember Dukes?
Yeah, so for me, I would not make a, I would love to get more information before we make a final decision on what the parking looks like. Parking's an issue, and so I'd love to know what other cities are doing to address some of that, if possible, before we make a definitive decision on prohibiting parking or not.
Okay. And I do have a clarifying point about that. As these are private drives, do city statutes related, related to parking and drive lanes, that sort of consideration, are those enforceable on private roads?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so there's a, there's a couple of things around that, like whether or not that is needed as a fire lane, and so whether the Fire District requires a no parking situation, which is often the case on some of these things. But, and then it might, it would be, become a fire code issue. But I think what, if, I think what we would look at is if, if, if there's not enough space to actually accommodate a legal parking space within, outside of the, outside of the travelway of these things, then you should not be able to park there, and there might be some level of enforcement that we do there. So I think that's what we want to look at is, how, how do you, like, enforce it? But also, what's the dimensionality of what that looks like? And, and is it possible to design that in to these things?
Because my question was just about the current condition.
Yeah.
Are the people parking in those shared drives, is that non-compliant? So would mitigate, if, is that non-compliant?
Yeah.
Does it need to be enforced?
Yeah, I think we would need to look into that a little bit more.
Because if, if we were to talk about that, then it might be an issue that's already resolved by what's already laid out.
That's true, it could be a covenant issue or something like that. We would, we would, we would want to dig into that a little bit more. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Oh, Mayor Protem Noble?
About the parking issue, because how many of us fill up our garages with all kinds of stuff, right? And there's no basement in a carriage home in reality. So what about inset parking spots, like four parking spots that are inset from the road so that people aren't parked on the street, but they, they're parked vertically in a spot, like four spots in a row? I've seen that in, in a neighborhood that a family member lives in, and I thought, oh, that's, I thought that was so genius, I took a picture of it, and I haven't shown it to you yet, and now it's virtually too late, but...
I think we, we understand what you're talking about.
Anyway, could that be part of the requirement that they can...
Yeah.
Yes, you can have your motor courts, but you got to figure out a way to provide off-street parking, if you will, for some of these homes?
Yeah, we, we can, we can investigate that a little bit further and, and, and come back with some options on that. The, the last one that the mayor brought up, is there consensus on the number of buildings and units around these courtyards? So four versus three for the, for the cul-de-sac? I, I'm not sure. I, I think we need a little bit more discussion. Is that a consensus item? So three versus four? So, three, so we have... And, and you're talking about the, the top configuration?
So instead of having four, there's three, so there's space a little bit more.
Okay. So I, I don't know if there's consensus on that, looking at it. Yeah, let's start with three. Okay. So there's eight, eight there, and then the four? Okay. Okay.
I have one last quote, clarifying question, just related to this, about, about the duplexes. So would the four units that, in the example that's shown, how are the front doors facing the street?
Yeah, it would be for the, the southern, the southern. I'm assuming plant, the top of the screen is north, so it would be for those two units.
It's the, the ones that affront the street, the doors need to face the street. The other ones would be allowed to face the shared drive.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify, the three limitation would just be on the, the option on the top, but we're comfortable with the, the more linear one with four? Okay. Thank you. I think, I think we have direction on this topic.
I had one additional question. Councilmember Noble had a, a good idea with the, the offset parking, the off-street parking. Is it possible that we can disperse this through a neighborhood? So if you don't have, say you had four, say 60, in this case, I guess, we'll say five of three. If you have five of three real close, it's 15, all close together, so you're going to have people spilling out into areas, they're all trying to share this tight area, whereas if you spread out the three throughout the neighborhood, you're going to disperse that high density throughout the neighborhood, it will keep it from being really compact in one area and very light in others. Would be a way to put that into the code, too. I guess first off, people accept the idea, then secondly, could we do that?
I, I would think that that would be maybe a part of the subdivision criteria, that overall, that there's, that, that the mixture of housing is dispersed throughout the neighborhood, not, and it could apply to all types of housing, not just this type. And so it could be a criteria that we write in the subdivision standards for approval that the, that the building forms have to be somewhat dispersed through the neighborhood. Does that make sense to them?
Yeah.
Yeah. We would, we would, we would look at, we could look at that, yeah.
So you could evenly disperse throughout the neighborhood, so it won't just be in one area?
Yeah. I, because I already think there's some diversity standards in the base code as well.
Yeah, there's some.
We have some standards that point to the diversity of different housing format that's required based on size, but I think that would be another standard in terms of trying to disperse and not have concentrated of the same type of housing in a given area. So that's something we would have to think through on in terms of what those parameters might actually look like.
So you'd have a size, you already have a size in place, but you could also have a density in place, is what you're saying?
Not necessarily density, but I, I think you're getting at, in terms of if we allow more courts, it's not necessary just 30%, but also how that 30% is dispersed in a given development, right? And so, yeah, I think there may be different ways to think about how we require that or codify. codify that. It's just something we have to think through a little bit more.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Brazil. Commissioner Schechter, he was prompting me. He had one more comment or question.
Thanks. Yeah, so one thing that occurs to me, I don't know if this makes much difference, but... So definitely, there is an HOA that maintains that area and everything. And so to me, there is some authority that people can turn to if you have a neighbor who's, like, parking in the wrong place. Just like if you live in a condo and someone's always leaving a bag of trash outside their door in the condo building, you go to the HOA, not the police, right? So there is some kind of authority, I mean, which is good. And also, if we look at that picture, the upper-left house in the top picture actually has a... It looks like a pickup truck parked in front of its driveway. So here's, like, an actual example we can look at. And it looks to me like, you know, that's just the benefit of the bargain. The top two houses got larger sort of parking drive areas than the bottom two, maybe in exchange for them not having streetfront property. I mean, to me, maybe it's not optimal for kids playing, but it doesn't look like that should be illegal, what we see right now in that picture. I don't know. I'm just tossing it out there. You know? It's not blocking anyone. That's why.
Yeah. And I just want to acknowledge there were some secondary issues that were brought up. We've noted those by a few folks, so I think some of that we're going to tackle in a moment. Others are part of a different project, I believe, so we'll note that, though.
All right. Moving on to the next topic, we're talking about build-to-rent. So build-to-rent is a new product type that is becoming very popular for folks that are empty nesters or new to the housing market. It's a residential development that's built specifically for rental housing. So it looks like a single-family development, but you don't own your home, you rent your home. And the developer maintains ownership of the large lot. So they don't subdivide these units into individual lots. It's all one big lot, and then the homes are built independently, and then there's private roads internal to the development. So that's what you're seeing in that top image. The feedback we receive from the development community is that we should allow this, but it should more resemble traditional neighborhood. And the traditional neighborhood concept is coming from kind of our executive management team. And in terms of design, what we're considering is whether you would allow parking to be disconnected from the unit, and you'd allow parking to be built as grouped parking spaces, more like an apartment complex would have, as opposed to having parking in front of your unit. So the image on the bottom kind of shows more of a traditional, single-family neighborhood, where you'd have parking in front of your unit. But the consideration that we're hearing from the development community is that they'd like to disconnect the parking from the unit and have more flexible standards for head-in parking. So what we'd like to ask council and planning commission tonight is, should we incorporate the build-to-rent standards with added flexibility for parking? Or should we not allow that added flexibility for parking, and it would be more traditional? And if there's not agreement tonight, we can always come back and address this topic at a later date.
Any comments from planning commission? Commissioner Schechter.
So background, I lived in Portland, Oregon, and I was really into city planning, learning about it. I learned about this one thing, this one anti-pattern called snout houses. And if you could, like, go back to that photo, this sort of... If you look at the houses down the street on the right, that's what's meant by snout houses. Now, whether you all think that that is a bad thing or not, you can see what you get if you're a pedestrian wanting to walk through your neighborhood, you just basically see a lot of garage doors. The front porches are recessed. It doesn't encourage, like, that neighborhood feeling of someone sitting out and saying hi to your neighbors versus, you know, I think, like, the complete opposite. And it's a spectrum... Opposite of the spectrum is in reunion, we have a lot of houses with the alleyway in the back, and all the front porches all lined up, right? It can be two extremes. So personally, I see that as an anti-pattern, the traditional snout house thing, which kind of came from Levittown, like, post-World War II. That's just my take. And so if developers actually want to do something different than that, I think that's cool. Maybe you'd encourage a more neighbor-like experience.
Any other comments from any of the other commissioners?
Have you heard... Do you know anything about that as an architect, or...
About the head-in... So I don't predominantly deal with residential architecture. That is not my forte. But I could agree with your point of breaking up and having a connected neighborhood with those sort of amenities. And I'll save my comments to land after the rest of the commissioners have their time. So Commissioner Ingleson, I believe you have a comment.
So I want to clarify, build-to-rent, you said there's no lots or anything that are plotted, that they just go in and build units?
Right. So the developer...
And are the units connected, or are they individual houses?
So some of the units are duplexes, and some are individual units. They're usually smaller format. And so you basically rent your unit, and you live in your unit, like it feels more like a traditional, single-unit home. And then if you have a duplex, then, you know, you'd share your unit with the neighbor to the other side. But you don't actually own your home. You just rent it. And the developer maintains ownership of the whole large assemblage and all the common areas. So you don't have to maintain your unit. You don't have to pay property taxes. All of that is included in your rent.
So this is like the subdivision that's up on 120th? And they don't have parking at the individual units. They have parking that's aside from the units.
Right. So that's what we're talking about tonight, is how to approach the parking. What the development community is asking for is flexibility to do grouped sections of parking, more like you'd have in an apartment complex, as opposed to that bottom image, which is maybe less desirable, where you're trying to do parking in front of each unit.
Yeah, this is the apartment complex version for single-family detached homes and single-family attached homes.
Okay. So all we're talking about here is the parking issue.
Well, it's also the arrangement of the homes in relationship to each other and relationships to the street features and the open spaces within that. So it... Like I said, it's... Heather's right in that... So the current standards, like a neighborhood standard, is you have a home on a lot with parking associated with that unit on the lot.
Right.
So what this would do is discup... It would decouple not only the parking from the individual units, but it would also allow units to be placed more creatively, rather than having a unit facing a street or a shared court for what we just talked about or some other thing.
Right.
So you could have units behind each other.
Right. Which is similar to the units that are up on 120th.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the reason I ask is because if they're going to do build-to-rent subdivisions, and they're going to have whole communities that are built to rent, are we going to limit how many build-to-rent communities can be in an area? Because if developers start buying up all this property up there, and they all become build-to-rent, you're going to build a whole area with transient community. And I think we talked about this earlier, because I just found out that the subdivision next to my subdivision was supposed to be single-family homes that were sold, and now it's going to be a whole community of rental homes. And so I don't think that it builds a sense of community, and it's a transient population. And so if they're... We're going to allow that, are we going to limit how many subdivisions like that are going to be going into an area? Because I would hate to see, all of a sudden, the whole North Range, all this open space, turned to all rent-to... Build-to-rent subdivisions. So that is my comment.
Commissioner Kiefer.
So are we discussing whether or not to allow build-to-rent, or is that something we're already guaranteed to allow?
Yeah. Currently, under the code, or the proposed code, build-to-rent would be allowed in a traditional neighborhood design, meaning that you could plat the subdivision in a conventional manner, having a unit on a lot fronting a street, or the alternatives, like the green courts or the motor courts. And whether that unit is owned individually or owned by a company, the city doesn't regulate that. So you can do rental homes in a single-family or single-family attached neighborhood under the base code. The question is, is do we want to allow this more flexible, complex-type thing that is not intended to be for sale? It's intended to be rental, and it's intended to have a different development pattern with the parking and with the homes? That is not more traditional, where you have the street, the street, and the homes fronting the street-type situation? That's the crux of this question, is that should we accommodate this model in this format? Or if they want to do build-to-rent, go for it, but it's got to look and feel like a traditional neighborhood?
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. So I've listened to the city plan. We had quite the discussion about short-term rentals. They had a big problem with that. So I think going further down this path and allowing more dense and non-neighborhood-looking situations is just going to amplify that even worse, going on Commissioner Erickson's idea here that there's no bought-in to the community, that they're not a part... They're all living there for 12 months to, you know, whatever that standard would be. Additionally, if this is under the guise of creating more affordable housing, it wouldn't. So when you have homes that are placed in the vernacular for sale, it doesn't change the price of anyone else. It doesn't make it affordable for anyone else, because it can never be bought. So I think cramming more in... Because essentially, it's what you're asking for, is the ability to just cram more stuff in in a creative way. I don't think that that's going to help anything additionally, on top of the infrastructure concerns I've had before. But when I bought my home, I bought it a certain price, and I have a mortgage, and I pay that. And that stays the same all the time. It doesn't... I have insurance, and taxes have changed. But when you rent, the rent's always going to continue to go up. So they're not going to be more affordable, so it's always going to be whatever the top market rate is, whereas I'm not paying... My mortgage right now is not what it would be if I bought the home today. So you're not creating anything that's affordable or better in that sense. It's just packing people in and allowing one particular group to profit from that and hurt everyone else. And I don't think that's an ideal thing, so I would be against allowing more dense to this. If you want to do it, we can't stop it, then that's fine from a... You have to build a community standard, just like we have everywhere else. But to allow more and allow more flexibility is just concerning to me.
Commissioner Van Huisen.
Thank you. To stick to the topic of whether we want flexibility in the parking location, I do support that. And I've seen several communities that have done this very well, and they actually increase the amount of area around each unit. They have larger patios, and it's more accommodating for outdoor barbecues, visitation, et cetera, to keep parking in one area, because now you're not taking up extra green space to put a roadway to drive from unit to unit. So if we're going to talk about just the flexibility of parking, I'm in support of that. Separate topic is how many of these units we want to put, et cetera. That's not tonight's discussion, though, so I will just say that I like the flexibility of parking.
Commissioner Waitling. Commissioner Sanchez.
Yeah.
And then, I am in favor of both methodologies, but in terms of... Some of the feedback that I've been hearing in relation to these sorts of communities is the availability of parking. So if you were to have detached parking, I should... I feel that that should be held at a higher ratio than traditional parking, because you don't have your street-front parking. There should also be some limitation to what that parking is to your unit. I don't know how you quantify or qualify that. But to Commissioner Van Huisen, it's... It gives opportunities to designers come up with creative solutions to... And creative arrangements, geometries of spaces. But then you may be precluding people with accessible routes to get to their unit. So I know that there's ADA that looks over that, but I think that's one of the issues, that just the ratio of parking, it may need to be more than just a traditional house, just because you don't have your frontage. And then Commissioner Schechter, you had an adamant point.
I did. Councilmember Kim had something to say, too.
We'll get to the commissioners.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay, I have another Portland anecdote, which is that when I first moved to Portland, it was very blue-collar and, like, you know, low-end kind of city. And so there was lots of very modest rental apartment complexes scattered all throughout the really desirable neighborhoods. It's kind of interesting. When I left, 13 years later, lots of money, and people in Portland had a lot more money to spend. And what I saw was lots of these rental buildings all got converted into condos. And it was pretty obvious, because, oh, they look really, really nice now, and people were buying them. And for me, that was like an interesting experience to see, that like, this stuff doesn't have to be written in stone, that it's kind of nice if the city can react and builders can react to the market. So I can, you know, I don't know, just tossing it out there.
And then one last rebuttal to Commissioner Schechter is that I have the opposite view on that, is that I don't believe that we would have ADA if people were left to their own devices, that that was a reaction to people not acknowledging that condition, that the development community, people didn't... You know, veterans coming back from Vietnam War, that the government had to enact to help protect those people. So sometimes, people left to their own devices won't make the best choices for everyone else. So now, deferring to council members, we'll... Councilmember Kim.
Thank you, Commissioner Biltoff. Bill...
Biltoff, you got it.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you. So that picture at the bottom here reminds me of Patrick Space Air Force Base in Cocoa Beach, Florida, where I lived in central housing out there when I was in the military. That type of venue that you see as far as how parking looks is exactly how it was for me. Great camaraderie, great community overall. I think the option regarding parking, to your point, is I don't think we should allow that. I think, to Commissioner Biltoff's point, you got... Having... Allowing the parking space to be there in front of the home makes sense. Now, I say all that to say this. This is more of a recommendation by the development community. So then, here's my recommendation. If this is allowed in Commerce City, there should be, to what Commissioner Kiefer said, a smaller percentage that is allowed within the city, number one. Number two is that my expectation would be is that there would be some, certain percentage, depending on number of homes they build, that AMI, that there's 40% below AMI, 30% below AMI, 20% below AMI that's allowed, because you're incorporating all utilities to this to rent out. However, what that means is now the rent price is going to be higher than what we consider affordable homes. I don't believe in affordable homes anymore these days, because honestly, with communities like this, I feel like it's not really affordable. So you look at Adams County's AMI settings, I would like to see a certain percentage at 40, 30, and 20% below AMI to make it affordable, to keep the parking as-is in front of the homes due to, for example, people who have challenges, physical challenges altogether. I mean, honestly, it was a great community for me back then, being able to sit in the back of a truck with a tailgate with one of my cohorts and drinking beer. So that's a long time ago, not these days. But that's my two cents.
Councilmember Dukes.
Okay. So I'm okay with the parking flexibility. I live next to the Villas of Buffalo Run, and they've been... It's been a great experience. To your point, though, there is... We have to think about the parking minimums, because there is some overflow parking that takes place, because there's some limited parking. But as far as the question for tonight around this parking minimums and parking requirements, I'm okay with that. As far as allowing the rent, the build-to-rent, I'm okay with that as well. I think, again, it reaches a market that's not market, like, that's not... Folks who don't want to... like that's not folks who don't want to buy a home or can't buy a home with the original down payment. And then there's houses within my neighborhood that are rentals already that are being rented at market value. So the rent thing is always going to be, it's going to be rent, and you're paying rent, so it's going to go up. So those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Douglas.
Thank you. So I would suggest that you all go up and see Avia, which is on 120th, and it's in between Chambers and Buckley Road. Drive through there. And you will probably have second thoughts on all of this. And I can tell you, given the opportunity, all the developers, that's all they'd put in. A mess as far as trying to get around it, around in the complex because there are cars parked all over the place. And so I would say, if you're going to do this, you really need to limit it. You probably need to have more traditional. Because at the end of the day, given the opportunity, anyone who's in business will maximize profits to the nth degree. And so you have to have some kind of control over it or it gets out of control. And I just suggest that everyone go up there and see that. We've had developers try to bring that same thing into other spaces around Tower Road where really should, it should be commercial. And instead, they're trying to bring in small rental properties and jam them in as compact as possible. So I think that we need to keep this in mind and keep it under control as much as possible.
Mayor Proton Noble.
Thank you, Chair. Is there a way, as was suggested, I didn't fully hear your answer, about whether there's a way to limit how much build to rent is available?
Yeah, I think that's the, based upon the feedback so far, that's going to be the tricky, the tricky aspect of this. We would have to think about that. And that might mean we, if we can't do it in time, we might need to kind of put this in the parking lot to research that, what mechanisms that might be. I don't know if you two have any thoughts on?
Other than just allowing it in P V.
Yeah.
Which is not what.
Yeah, it might be maybe a conditional use or some.
Conditional use.
Because I remember that we approved a metro district on 104th. And they got rid of their metro district and went to build to rent. We do have a build to rent project that has been approved, I think, administratively. Is that correct or not?
The only one that I'm aware of right now is the Aberdeen, not, excuse me, the. Everly Place.
Yeah, Everly Place, that's on 104th.
Yeah. Yeah, so that is.
But they were a metro district with homes for sale. And then they got rid of it. And that didn't ever come back to the city council as a build to rent.
And I don't, I don't think, because that's our traditional neighborhood. It went through a plating process. The homes are traditionally designed. And we, and we can't prohibit people from renting out individual homes. That's not something, and I don't know if the attorneys want to weigh in on that, but that's typically something we don't, the cities don't have purview over whether or not somebody rents or owns their space. So that, as a conventional subdivision, that could be built anywhere. This is a slightly different animal than the Everly Place situation.
Well, in theory, a developer could say, I'm building homes and then make them all rentals.
Yeah, that could happen, that could happen anywhere, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, so there wouldn't be a way of limiting it. It's just something that could occur.
Well, I think this is, like, I'm going to just, I'm just going to use the term, this is a single-family complex, like an apartment complex. That's what this is. And so, given that it's one lot with multiple unit, multiple buildings and all that, it becomes more of an exercise in site planning than it does in subdivision. And that's what we would need to look at, is like, how do we, if there's a concentration factor that we want to regulate, how do we do that? I'm just not familiar with that off the top of my head. So we would need to research that.
I would ask that we look into corporate ownership because I know that is limited in other cities. And that would force the price up if we have corporate owners because they can just swoop in with their REITs and buy a bunch of houses and rent them out. And first-time homebuyers are shut out and wind up having to rent. So if there's some way we can take a look at that, that would be helpful. This is, on the face of it, I'm fine with build to rent. But it's a more complicated story than is being presented, I think. Regarding parking, there does need to be some accommodation for parking that doesn't involve large lots and heat islands and that kind of thing. But I prefer if there was parking very near the home, if you're talking about retirees moving in and so forth, that doesn't make sense because they need to be able to get to their cars. They can't like walk a long distance to get to their car in some parking lot or something. That would be a misnomer if a developer is trying to present that this is great for senior citizens. No. Let's see, what else did people say? Yep, that covers it for me. Thank you.
Mayor Douglas.
Thank you, you're fine. Yes, I guess the question is not, this is allowed or not allowed? Because L G I has sold about 600 homes to a private company, building the homes, and they're for rent. They're going to be rent to own. Basically the same thing.
Second Creek Farms?
No, it's L G I. So basically, on 104th and 96. So they're building the homes, and they're putting a program where they're going to rent them. And then people can later on look at purchasing the homes down the road. But that's within the neighborhood. We have the same thing over in Buffalo Highlands. We have homes that are in a section, people are, you know, companies already purchase them. There are like eight of them. And they're renting them out. And what I see is, is around compliance and keeping up with the yards. Because rental homes are the worst upkeep in a neighborhood. When I was counsel for 2011, 2019, all we ever heard about was the places that were unkept were rentals. Whether the city could go out there and mow the yard and then, and then charge them later on because they're out of compliance. So, you know, we're going to go down that arena. We got to make sure that the standards are high, that allow parking so it looks like it's a traditional neighborhood. I agree, no parking islands. Those become a place for dumping ground when it snows. So where you had parking, now you don't. And then community space, I know it shows up there, the green spots and all that stuff. But yes, I think it should be a higher quality and then the aesthetics, if this is going to be allowed. And then it can't be, the front or the back cannot be adjacent to a major road like Tower Road, 104th, 96. It has to be within, within the neighborhood, away from major intersections, collectors. Because like I said, when those aren't, when upkeep starts to fail, those are the first thing people see when they drive the neighborhood. It's an eyesore. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Teeter.
Yeah, I think every home should have its own parking. And my thinking on it is if we're going to go to this electric vehicles, you have to have a charging station also. And you can't do that with that. I mean, well, if you're on city council, you can. You just charge when you come to city council meetings. But other than that, you need your own garage.
So to Councilmember Teeter's point about the electric charging stations, I know in some portions of I B C, I think in, I don't know if it's in 21, but 24, how is, there's, there are requirements for charging stations since this is a singular owner. Is it zoned as R1 or R5?
I know what you're talking about, yeah, yeah. So I don't believe Commerce City's adopted this. It's in the 2021 codes as well, but it's, I think it's an optional appendix. I don't think we've adopted this. So you're talking about electric vehicle-ready and electric vehicle-equipped parking lots. And how that's handled is, you know, within single-family development that has garages under the code, right, under the base code, it's got to be equipped with the plug and the 2-volt things so a homeowner could install the equipment if they, if they need it. In multifamily and commercial and non-residential, it's based around the number of parking spaces provided in total. So like, if you look at the example on the north part, which is kind of what we're talking about, where the streets are like parking, parking lots, basically, where, single-loaded parking lots. Under the code, you would add up the total number of spaces and a certain percentage have to be EV-ready and a certain percentage have to be EV-installed if we were to adopt that building code. So that's how that would be handled. It would be handled on a site-wide basis. And then we could look for even distribution across the site. There's even requirements that a certain percentage of ADA spaces have to be equipped with equipment as well to accommodate that aspect too. So it's a, it's a building code issue, but it's, there's definitely approach to it in these situations.
But since it's being asked to be treated as a multifamily development with the multifamily parking, I think that that should be a requirement to that. If it's, I don't think they can have both sides of the cake.
Yeah, yeah, if, yes, yeah, if there's not a garage, yeah, we would treat it like a multifamily type development for that particular code. If and when we adopt, if and when we adopt that code, yeah.
Thank you. And then Mr. Brazil, I think we can just recap back to the points that we've heard and see if there's any additional discussions or consensus related to what we've talked about.
Yeah, so I think there was consensus on allowing the flexibility of, in design in general, with some concern about the parking ratios, making sure the parking ratios are right-sized for the development. And also that, there was a lot of design, there was a lot of design feedback that I got out of the conversation as well. The other thing was about concentrations of these within the community. I think what, just really quickly, I don't know if we're going to have enough time in the next two weeks to come up with a comprehensive set of standards, design standards to incorporate into the initial code. But I do think what I hear is some desire to figure out how to do this, addressing all these, all these design and locational standards that were, what we're hearing from, from the group. Is that a fair, fair statement, Mayor?
Do I hear a hint that this part would go forward as it is? Just what we're talking about? So that some developers can go ahead and put an application in?
No, I think what, for the new code, I think what we're saying is that we would need to come back and treat this separately, other than the base code because there's a lot here that we're hearing that we need to be intentional about in crafting those standards. And I don't think there's a quick, there's not a quick thing we could do in the next two weeks. So we're going to put it in the parking lot as something to come back to Planning Commission and City Council.
Thank you.
Addressing the issues that you all have raised.
So one of the things we heard in terms of land uses, the top one about data centers, we heard from council, which is that you'd like these to be considered a conditional use. And unless we hear otherwise, that's the way the code is drafted. So data centers would be a conditional use permit. And then the other one about fuel sales regulations, we heard from the development community. And that's that they'd like an exemption from the 660 feet where you can't have two gas stations closer than 660 feet away from each other. You'd have an exemption for that if it was a grosser fuel station. So, you know, like a King Supers or a Safeway that has their own fueling station, you would exempt those from the 660 feet. So we just wanted to get a quick head nod on this one. We don't think it needs detailed discussion if everybody agrees with that.
Mayor Proton Noble.
Sorry, I have to ask about this because there's a project at 104th and Highway 2 that would be a gas station across the street from another gas station. That's not 660 feet. Why is that gas station on the south side being considered?
We were being very high level in the regulation. So let us look at the regulation and be more specific for you.
Okay, because it reminds me of a similar question that I had earlier, such as, how did we wind up having motor court homes when we don't have an allowance for them? But these are all questions that can be dealt with at a later time, I guess.
So it's a supplemental standard.
Councilmember Dukes.
Thank you. I'm okay with the regulations for exemptions for grocery stores, knowing that there's a high need for us to have grocery stores in northern range. If this is something that helps, I'm okay with it.
Mayor Proton, the actual standard about the separation, it says no more than two may be located within 660 feet of an arterial or arterial intersection. So that's how that came to be, those two stores came to be. So there should be a limit of two at each arterial intersection. That's the current standard.
And I apologize if I read that wrong. It is more than two.
Me too.
So you couldn't have more than two.
Okay, damn.
Within 660 feet.
I do have a question just about that, related to the data centers and just conditional use. Because I know this is one of the points that got brought up last time, and I just don't want it to get lost, is I know, looking at utilities, water, all of that, but how, one of the big challenges is power. How is that handled as part of that review? Just in terms of the infrastructure for the community? If you could go into that? Because that's, I think that's one of the big concern. There's a lot of concerns with data centers, but that's one of the huge concerns.
Yeah, so power, like water, like other infrastructure, we refer, we refer these things out to our two providers within the community, Excel and United. And if there is a capacity constraint, then that has to be addressed by the development. So additional substations, additional transmission capacity. And that's what we typically see with data centers is that they bring those types of infrastructure improvements along with, with the proposal itself. So I think on the data centers, like the last topic we were just talking about, there's a lot more research that we need to do on that topic. And so the conditional use is the initial thing in order to give the community more time to do research on this particular topic and bring it back to Planning Commission and Council at a future date when we can have a much more thoughtful and informative conversation around that particular use.
Thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to make sure that that was captured in. I just wanted to make sure that that was captured in the current process. Thank you.
Yes, it's one of the parking lot items, yes.
Any other questions before we, oh, Mayor Douglas?
Thank you, appreciate that. I would say around data centers, Southwest Power Pool Plus is coming to Colorado 2026, and another RTO, a part of RTO that our state legislators passed. Even a big company like Excel Energy is having a hard time bringing that type of megawatts, 300, 400, we're not talking, because we have 54 data centers here in Colorado, but they're small, 3 megawatts, 2 or so. But not in a large range of 150 to 300 to 400. So the ability for Southwest, Southwest Power Pool to come in here would be to also have the transmission lines be put in as well. Because no one's building transmission lines. It's about $1 million a mile. So, and then you have to go over property, so that's another thing, too. You've got to acquire somebody's land or force them into selling it. So there are some hurdles there. And you have to build substations to make sure to bring that power down. So there's, so data centers aren't just a checkoff. And with the state even giving incentives, you just have to have the power, so. Yeah, I know you found out water is an issue as well. So I would say with the data centers, I'm fine with that. But as far as fuel sales regulations, I'm fine with the grocery stores. That's a no-brainer there. My thing was the gas stations, just so we can get other things in, because it's, it's an easy thing, but you know, most of our national chains and all that. We had 7-Eleven stores years ago, and we used to have, 7-Eleven was being built every 17 seconds around the world. And now 7-Eleven's competition. So I would say, I know we're not talking about it tonight, but distance from each other. I understand by intersection, arterial intersections, all that, but having a distance from another gas station. So that way, it kind of helps with the development to say, hey, let's think outside the box and not just go to box number one, or box number two, gas station or car wash. So it would help our development community think outside the box if we put a little distance between each other of them. Thank you.
Councilmember Teeter?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the gas stations, the more the merrier. But talking about data centers, there's a, there's a problem with them because they demand a lot of water, water for cooling, and they demand a lot of electricity. One good thing is that today, the Colorado State Legislature has passed a ordinance or a bill that nuclear energy is now a green energy. And it goes into effect today. So that's, there's hope for data centers, because what we have now, there's no chance that solar and wind is going to take care of a data center. And so we got to have another source of energy before we even think about them.
Thank you. Sorry, Councilmember Douglas?
So there is controversy on whether that is, just because they labeled it clean doesn't necessarily mean that they're...
They labeled it green.
No, clean.
I thought it was green energy.
Clean.
Okay.
Alex Valdez ran that for the guys in Pueblo who want to do, change the Cherokee plant to nuclear, which the people from Pueblo are really trying to fight, because the people from Canyon City are living with the aftermath of the nuclear that went wrong. So just to point that out.
Mayor Protem Noble?
Thank you. Actually, there's an AI that reports on our meetings, and it calls me Mayor Proteum Noble, as if Proteum is my first name. It's pretty funny. Sorry. Anyway, data centers, can we make them their own category in the zoning regulations? So they're not mixed in with other stuff? And they can say, oh, but we could do a data center because blah.
Right, that's the way we have it drafted, is that data centers are identified as their own use category and required to have a conditional use permit.
Okay, and what would the conditional use permit, so it's...
So that would be a public hearing before Planning Commission and Council.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brazil?
So I think, I think we have consensus on the approach on both of these topics. So really quick, just doing a quick time check. We have, we have a couple of what we think will be quick ones, and then one beefy one before we get into the implementation items. So I think we're nearing the end of the policy conversation, but knowing that there's one beefier topic coming up, we're hoping to get through the next two really, really quickly, unless there's a need to talk more further about this.
So the next few slides will cover updates to the design standards for building design and then also site design. So with respect to building design, based on the feedback we received from last, the study session in June, we updated the public hearing draft, or working public hearing draft, to include more detailed language and definitions regarding the type of primary building materials that should be discouraged. So that was based on feedback that we should provide more clear expectations about what we don't, what we don't want, so that we don't unintentionally discourage or disallow building materials that we would actually want to allow, such as panelized metal or creative uses of concrete. And so examples of these updates include specifying that exposed sheets or corrugated metal that is not part of an architectural panel system is not allowed, and that unfinished concrete without decorative formwork or detailing is not allowed. And we also have supplemental pictures to expand on that as well. And though, in addition to that, we also added some flexibility for the community development director to have some additional discretion and exercise those rights as well. And in terms of additional refinements to, apologize, green court developments, we've also heard from the development community that we should have a little bit more clarity and flexibility in the site design. And so they've asked to provide a specific number when it comes to the minimum width of a common open space that's required for these developments, and include more clear, intense statements to just better characterize what we're trying to accomplish through those green court developments. And finally, we've also heard refinements to the facade duplication standards for single-family homes. The updates were made to that to try to promote more variety, but what we've heard back from the development community and their designers is that it's a little bit more complicated than what we have in the books today, and that, and on the grounds, we don't really actually have a problem with this. And so that we reverted back to the current standards we have.
Mayor Douglas?
Thank you. I would say building material, you know, I do know this was brought up a while back. Would you give the flexibility for the department to actually allow, as far as different designs, as far as vinyl? That's what you're asking, right, vinyl material and all that?
Yeah, the vinyl's the big one coming up. So we're not talking about vinyl quite yet.
Got you, okay. And as far as the court development, I believe common areas need to be more enhanced. And then as far as, when it comes to housing variation, I know that one developer, which is no longer building up here, they didn't want, they make sure that the homes don't look the same next to or catty-corner from.
Yeah.
Okay, so you had to have so many away from each other. And then elevation size, oh, you know, different things like that. And then color, same thing. So I don't know, some developers had that, and it worked really, really good. But if the city could have some sort of standard to make sure that it's fluid, I would like to have that in place.
And I do have just one point of clarification, just to the, what is the, what is being considered as the minimum width of common open space?
I think what we decided on from kind of 60 feet from the front facade of the buildings, so 60 feet in width.
So what if there was a common open space of a track? How would that be handled? If it's a common open space, is that, how would...
Yeah, it would be the width of the tract.
The width, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is the minimum width of a green court dimension. It has to be at least 60 feet wide, is what we're saying.
Okay, thank you.
So here's the topic for discussion for building materials, circling back on our conversation last month in June on the topic of vinyl. So the feedback that we received from City Council and Planning Commission that was that we've heard some initial concerns about the durability and overall quality of building material, but we really wanted to hear specifically if there are other concerns that we need to weigh and consider to help identify the appropriate tools and standards to better address them. But the direction that we got from Council and Planning Commission was to seek more input from the development community on this topic, and also to consider some of the cost implications of what a potential ban might include. So since then, we reached out to the Home Builders Association for their input on this topic. And so their kind of formal response and answer was that their preference is to give builders the flexibility to choose the siding of their choice, rather than imposing a specific mandate that could potentially increase construction costs. Additionally, they provided a brief overview of the different pros and cons associated with vinyl siding. Some of the pros include lower maintenance, less upfront costs. It's easier to install and replace than would in cement siding or stucco. And some of the cons, obviously something we've discussed, is not as durable as wood and cement siding or stucco. Generally can fade over time, and cannot be repainted, and can also warp or melt under certain conditions. And then on the right-hand side is a chart from a recent study that we've pulled from a third-party study that looks at the different costs of different building materials by square foot. So as you can see here on the left-hand side, vinyl siding is the cheapest option, which is followed by other popular building materials like fiber cement and wood siding. So additional background information, vinyl siding comes with different grades and thickness. The most, the highest, or highest thickness level is .055 inches. Oakwood also reached out, who uses vinyl siding in the, in Commerce City, and they've indicated that they build with a .044 and .046 inch thickness, which is kind of that mid-tier premium grade there. And so it's also important to note that while greater thickness is associated with enhanced durability, the quality and maintenance of the siding is also dependent on other factors like installation. So if the vinyl siding isn't properly installed, where you allow it to expand and contract, they can warp under certain conditions. So that's also a consideration as well. And then in terms of the total cost that the building materials contribute to the overall cost of a home itself, we found kind of a broad range with vinyl siding, with vinyl siding making up the least, again, followed by wood and fiber cement. And so that's what the percentages on the bar charts are indicating over there. So again, really just tonight, the question for Planning Commission and City Council is what are the key issues from Council and Planning Commission's perspective in order for staff to better stand the issue and identify potential tools and features to address them if needed?
So any questions, comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Sanchez?
Yeah, just anecdotally, I live about six blocks off 104th. Not even that far, I'm sorry, only about three and a half blocks. And in the time that I've lived here, I've seen that vinyl siding in at least five different places coming off. So I don't know if it's an insulation issue or not, but I'm not a real big fan of how it's, it's been installed or how it's looked in the neighborhood, because you see panels literally flapping in the wind. And like I say, I've seen at least a handful in just a two-and-a-half-block area, and that's just from personal experience, thanks.
Commissioner Ingleson?
It's also not hail-proof. And so when I lived over in Front Terra, and we had that big hailstorm, I don't know how many years ago, all of the houses in the neighborhood that had vinyl got plummeted. The other ones, not so much.
And so then, my comment would be, is if it's an aesthetic issue with the appearance and the longevity of vinyl, then it should be handled in the land development code. But if it's something related to fire performance, even installation, wear requirements, performance of the material, that should be handled, I believe, as an amendment or an exception in the IBC, because vinyl is already included in Chapter 14 of the IBC. And I was just looking to see what the Commerce City's requirements to that, and it was just noting to an ASTM test, just to, it was just a base-level test for vinyl siding. So I believe there's capacity that could be handled, codified that way, and not necessarily, I think it's the, what the argument, what the methodology is here, is this an aesthetic thing or a code thing? And if it's a code thing about fire performance, that that should be a building code issue, not a land development code issue. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you. So this is a real frustrating topic for me because of the fact that I sat on council. When the building code was changed, we gave them six months. They asked for a year, we said, no, six months, no more vinyl. And guess what? They just kept on using vinyl. Nobody said anything, and so they just kept going with it. And now they're saying that that conversation or the ruling never happened. And it did, I did not dream this. I have other people who were on council with me who knows for a fact that it happened that way. And, and so to me, this is very frustrating. It's both a safety issue and an aesthetics issue in my, from my perspective. So I don't know what else to say about it, but it just keeps popping up like a whack-a-mole.
Councilmember Dukes?
I'd say they have a point of information for Jeff Bezos. Can you explain that meeting? It was a study session that was no formal approval. Is that what you described? I know you talked about this at our last meeting.
I can't speak with authority on this, because I wasn't there. I, what I suspect happened was either, because I know my predecessor went back through the rec, he told me he went back through the record, couldn't find any record of it in the ordinance that was adopted, or the minutes. So what I suspect happened, given what we continue to hear, is that maybe there was an intent to go one direction, but when the actual motion and ordinance was passed, it wasn't incorporated in that. But that's pure speculation on...
Well, and that's, that's the point of information, that when the ordinance came up for vote, official vote, it wasn't in the ordinance. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, it's definitely not in the ordinance that we have signed and adopted on the books.
Okay, thank you. As far as this question here, I just want to just make quick comments on the question. I think as far as...
I think as far as my concern, or my question here is if we don't have vinyl siding as a part of our LDC, if I go to remodel a house in the south part of the city, would that prohibit them from using vinyl?
So if we were to put in the LDC a prohibition on vinyl siding and an existing home has vinyl siding on it, I believe we would look at our non-conforming provisions that allow people to do repairs and replacements like for like to allow that to continue. I'm going to.
I guess the big question there is will it, it won't unintentionally ask a homeowner if they're going to rebuild or do a pop-out or ADU in the south part specifically. It won't make them use the most expensive material, is that correct?
Well, expansions would be treated differently than repairs and remodels where.
Speaking of expansions.
Yeah, so expansions, they would be, any expansion would be subject to whatever the code is in, at the place.
So this could actually increase the cost if I want the repair or expand?
Yeah, you would, you would look at other materials other than the vinyl siding on that unless we had to carve out for that exception in the code, which we could craft.
Okay. But as far as like my additional questions here, the biggest one for me is the fire, making sure it's a fire safety if that's a part of this. As far as the, the option between a different vinyl than the different, I think, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of letting the developer and let the builders decide which one to use. I'm thinking through, you know, folks are going to buy, if they're going to choose to buy the house or not, I don't want to put too many restrictions on what folks can have choices on.
Councilmember Kim?
Can we go back to the last slide, the pre, one previous to this one? So when I look at this, I, I see this as a combination aesthetics and fire safety. If I'm not mistaken, I think vinyl siding has that, what's that called? The PVC, that type of, it's made with that polychloride, whatever it is. Since, Pete, right, so it basically will burn faster, burn faster at a higher rate compared to, well, second to wood shingles versus, and then fiber cement seems like, I think it's a little bit more sound and structure. So from a fire, from a safety perspective, in my opinion, I, I would, I look at it at that, that level. In addition to that, I mean, if the, for example, what Councilmember Dukes was saying to with regards to vinyl siding that currently exists in the southern part of the homes, I would think that there would be a, a mechanism or not a mechanism, but a way that a waiver would be allowed or grandfathered in to say if they were to make a build out, they can still utilize vinyl siding. Cause I look at also from an aesthetics point, we all know this, you drive through a union, you see stuck, you know, these beautiful homes there and all of a sudden something that fall flat, right? You see that. It's more of the aesthetics in my opinion, that aspect of it too. So I see it both ways. I, but I think kind of moving forward, I think wood shingles burn faster than vinyl, but that's why I think the most safest would be something of that fiber cement. So I would encourage development community not to utilize vinyl where, wherever they don't have to.
Yeah, and I just want to, there's another conversation around the, the external hardening that we have scheduled for August 24th, when we're talking about the urban wildland interface. But I will kind of add to what you're saying is that vinyl siding does not have a fire mitigation factor to it. It's what's behind the vinyl siding that's important when it comes to fire separation. So the, the siding will melt.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, and so.
For vinyl, it would.
And so even though we're going to talk about this as far as the fire, like the, the fire aspect of vinyl siding is not really a thing in that it doesn't contribute to external hardening of structures on that. So I just wanted to get that out ahead of time. And I think that's consistent with what, what you just said, Councilmember Kim, is that they tend to have a, a lower point of heat warping and melting and stuff like that. But we, what it, what is important is what, what happens behind that. And that's where the fire protection happens. So it's purely an aesthetic treatment to the exterior of, of the home, vinyl siding.
So aesthetics for sure. If there are existing homes that have that, whatever siding it is and whatever it is that we're, whatever we're doing, they should be grandfathered in to be continuing allowance for that. Fire, I would, from a safety perspective too, I see it from that aspect as well.
So just to clarify, you, given your exception preference, are you for allowing this to, to be in or are you, are, are you wanting to phase it out for the aesthetic reasons? That's with the, cause you, you added the exception to it, which would, which would presume that you were more, more about phasing out the use of vinyl siding. I, I wasn't clear on, on what, what you were on that.
I think there needs, it's not so much saying that we're phasing out vinyl siding. I, I see it as, you know, we have homes currently today that have it, regardless of where we live, that those homes that currently have it, that, let me back up, homes that are not currently built out, we exclude. Homes that currently have it now, grandfathered in to continue allowed use if they, especially they're going to build out even further, expand out, expand out, making, you know, an extra room or whatever the case is.
Makes sense.
Bumping out their homes. Thank you.
Mayor Douglas?
Sorry, thank you. I, I would say if we're going to do this, that this only applies to new builds. New, new construction and not, not replacement. And, you know, as a homeowner that has vinyl, if you had to replace it, it's not going to be $3.85 linear foot. It's going to be around the 9.19 because you don't, you're not buying in quantity. You're, you're buying based on what you need for your home. So it's a different cost factor when you have to replace it is, replace it, replace an item versus building new because you're, you know, building quantity and, and that's their, part of what, what they do as far as products, they produce their own product. So yeah, just, this applies to new builds only.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Thank you. I agree with Mayor Douglas for new construction. We do have all the carriage homes that already have vinyl on them, so if they need to replace their vinyl siding, they should be able to do it. And just to support Councilmember Douglas on this, I, I took the, I contacted former Mayor Hughesman in, at his new home in Texas and I said, am I crazy? How do I have this memory? And he said, oh no, you're not. We did. I said, okay. I think the issue is, is that the, it's so technical, the, the parts of the, what do you call it? The IBC? Yeah. It's so technical that what we thought we were doing may not have translated or just that little slip of something being not included meant that it, it went forward. I see this as both an aesthetic issue. The city of Frederick in, here in Colorado bans vinyl on the basis of aesthetics, period. They don't even get into fire. I also though, see it as a fire issue. One of the reasons we had setbacks between homes that we approved was due to this so that if you were a home that was particularly close together, it would be a problem. We did not do eight feet from the property line, but it was four feet from the property line, four feet from the property line, which was eight feet. That too is a mistake that somehow made it through in one of those 15 measures that we passed in a single night. So stuff like that happens. That needs to be fixed, but that was the whole point of, of dealing with this, of this issue, both aesthetically and regarding fire. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Teeter?
Yeah, I, I think vinyl siding should be banned for any future building just because it, it, it's, they put the houses too close together and it gets hot and it melts, then the wood catches on fire, then the structure burns down. And the same thing that Commissioner Wilson just said, with the hailstorms and hit that vinyl siding and it just destroys it, it, it doesn't hold up. And I'm also opposed to wood shingles just because we've got a new generation of people when it comes to Fourth of July and fireworks and they're shooting off some, some big fireworks and it just takes a spark to get that wood roof going. And so I, I think that's something that should be eliminated and like it should be grandfathered in, whoever has it, you can keep it, but as far as new structures are going up, it should be banned. That's all I have.
So point of information, just two questions, just related to IBC amendments. What is that process? If there, if, and because my second question is what is the timeframe for the adoption of the next model code?
Yeah, so amending the code would be an ordinance change with the city. So we, it would be language that we would draft and, and adopt through, through the ordinance process through City Council. We don't have a schedule for the next iteration of the building codes yet because we're, we're still kind of in the thick of implementing what was passed a couple of years ago as well. I don't have any clarity at this point. It's not a, it's not on our work plan for next year. It might be something we, we talk about for the following year.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think what I heard on the consensus was is precluded from new builds moving forward, but allow the existing structures to have some ability to maintain, replace and add to the home as well. Is that, okay.
Councilmember Dukes?
Vinyl fences in there also, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think as far as implementation or clarification is a new, there's some bills that are already in process. And so you have to think about what that looks like, is it, yeah, or will they finish out whatever they're building now versus, so just some clarification would be helpful.
That's a fair point. And like we're talking about the new code and so the next topic, the last topic is about implementation and that kind of factors into that. So we can, we can use this as an example of, of some of these options that we're about to, to talk through. Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Just a few slides.
I'm sorry, I just have one other thing I want to say. Oh, I'm sorry, did I inter, inter, interrupt you, Jeff? Okay. It's that when I think of aesthetics, I'm thinking about the fact that it doesn't withstand our climate now, especially on the eastern side of, of Commerce City, the northeastern side. And that's, that's the biggest issue for me, the fading, peeling, et cetera.
Great. So we have three more slides before we get to our next agenda about the adoption strategy. And so I'll cover them quickly here. So some tactical updates that we made to the site design standards for multi-unit residential. One change we've made to provide a little bit more flexibility was for our covered parking standards. The current requirement is that for multi-unit developments such as apartment buildings, 50% of the parking must be covered with half needing a garage space. So we've heard that this has been hard to accommodate in the past and that's overall cost to construction and housing. So it's been revised to require only 25% of the off-street parking to be covered, whether that's in a carport or garage. And so that's one change. The other one is we have bike parking requirements, but in the public hearing draft or public review draft, there were bike parking requirements for duplex. We've also heard that seemed a bit of a stretch and, and it is actually pretty uncommon in most coasts to have that. And so that requirement was removed because they're mostly associated with larger kind of multifamily products where you might have crowded bike parking. With respect to landscaping, some of our tree requirements were tailored and to, were tailored to better right size to their respective built residential building form. So just to give in perspective, a single family or a single unit detached home were required to have two trees in the front line. We've lowered that down to one, just knowing the physical limitations of accommodating two trees on the front yard for most homes. For foundation planning, which is a new standard that we've incorporated where we're requiring plantings at the, the base of the building, there were concerns that, that having regular irrigation could hurt the foundation of the building. So we've specified that drip irrigation is appropriate there. And then we've also heard concerns about our tree canopy percentage requirement that builders and developers in the past have hard time, both with staff in terms of enforcement and administration of a percentage-based requirement. And so we now have, just have maximum spacing to ensure that trees when planted are adequately spaced so that they provide adequate shade throughout the development. Other tactical kind of refinements were made to provide clear standards and improved design feasibility. And so one example is that is tree requirements on steep slopes. We had some requirements that from a, from a landscape perspective was just difficult to accommodate. So there were some tactical refinements such as those that were made. For open and amenity space requirements, if you remember back to our presentation, this is where we have a percentage-based requirement for all developments. And within that percentage, we require them to build a certain type of open or amenity space. And those open or many space were organized by different zone districts. And so one feedback we received from the building community was that, hey, organizing them by the zone districts actually limits our flexibility to think about the type of development we're providing and the type of open spaces we want to accommodate. So we allow for a little bit more flexibility there by removing that. And then we've also recalibrate, recalibrated our multipliers to better reward more costly improvements such as community centers based on the feedback that we receive from the development community. Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Thank you. I do want, I keep hearing the building community. I don't want the tail to be wagging the dog. I am interested in what happened about trees. I don't understand what it means. Could you be more clear about trees?
For the, the tree canopy percentage? Yes.
Actually, how many trees are required, what the maximum space is, et cetera?
Let's see. So we went from a percentage-based requirement to just relying on base standards where we require trees. So trees would be required as part of our site landscaping standards. So they're required as part of interior parking spaces that are developed. We also have parking, or sorry, we also have trees requirements for buffer yards, tree lines and trying to think of, yeah, and just general landscaping. So based on where landscaping is required on the site, there's a minimum number of trees that must be accommodated. Yeah. Detention ponds and so forth. And so we, those stay the same, but in, in the previous draft of the code, what we had in addition to that was a percentage-based tree canopy requirement. And so I'm forgetting the exact percentage, but if, if, if the development had to accommodate 20 to 30% tree canopy, the feedback that we received was that measuring out what that built-out canopy looks like on a site plan makes it difficult to submit and also have staff review to make sure that's actually correct. And so we've just heard that those requirements where they're required today by other municipalities, they've just had a little bit of a hard time actually working through those standards with staff. And then in terms of the maximum spacing requirements itself, I'm trying to remember, do you remember exactly?
Well, the tree lawn is like 30 feet on center.
So 30 feet, okay.
But we didn't have the tree canopy before. It's not in the current code.
Right, it's not. Yeah, and just a point of clarification, I apologize, is the, the tree canopy percentage. Yeah, and just a point of clarification, I apologize, is the, the tree canopy percentage requirement, it's not in the current code. It was a new standard that was proposed early on as part of the land development code update.
So, just to paraphrase, we didn't change, we didn't alter the amount of landscaping required, we altered how we calculate.
Yeah.
And measure that landscaping. Would that be a fair, okay. Does that make sense, Mayor Pro Tem?
Okay, yes, because, because of our heat, we do need
Yes.
Trees.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't want to go down. Thank you.
Yes. Mayor Douglas.
Sorry about that. I didn't know we were going to take questions after the three, or, or ask questions as we go away. So, on this 25% multi-unit residential, you know, when they changed it to 25%, it's going to make it hard, very competitive when, then there's less space for coverage. People are going to be, when it's being those spaces. Why was that reduced? Is that what the, the developers are asking the builders?
Yeah, so the, the current standard is, is that a certain percentage of parking spaces that are, so we're not, we're not changing the number of parking spaces required, but a certain percentage of those have to be in garages. What we heard was, is that it kind of predetermines an outcome that, that doesn't allow for flexibility in, in like, product type and, and levels of, of like rental amounts and so forth. And so what they were looking for was a little bit more flexibility in having the percentage be in both garages and/or covered, like a carport or shade, shade-covered thing. So, these are the minimums. It doesn't mean that they can't do more than that. And so if you have a particular developer that is trying to attract a certain type of renter, that prefers covered or garage parking, they can build that into the, their standard. But it was just the minimum amounts that they were saying, we wanted a little bit more, they wanted a little bit more flexibility versus garage, versus covered, versus open air and so forth. And that's what that.
Right, thank you. And then as far as the trees, are we getting away from putting trees in the tree lawns? Or if it's a smaller space, it goes in the yard for maximum coverage as far as canopy, or?
Yeah, we, we still have the, we still have the street tree requirement, but in conjunction with that, with, with another companion project, the engineering standards and specs update, we want to update the street cross-sections. You alluded to that earlier
Yeah.
This evening, to make sure that the tree lawns are adequately sized. Because a, a big issue is that a five-foot tree, tree lawn with, is, is probably the bare minimum you can have to support any sort of tree growth. And you all are seeing the impacts of that as far as buckling and all that. We want to, we want to create a revised tree, a street standard that has a little bit more room to accommodate the street trees. Ultimately, those are, those are valuable amenities for the community for a variety of reasons, aesthetically, climate-wise, and, and other stormwater management and other things. So we, we're not trying to eliminate that, we're trying to fix the design issue.
All right. And, and I know it's not part of this, but it, it's also a requirement to have those tree root barriers. And that's already part of it.
I think that's a current standard.
Yeah.
But if, if we do widen it, the, the need for those are less, but we can make sure that we
I would still say you require them, because
Okay.
Unless we're telling people what specific trees to put in, we're going to have that problem.
Okay.
And then Councilmember Dukes has a question.
I agree with, with Mayor Douglas on, on the streets. As far as the, the canopy requirement, can you walk us through why they, why it went from 50 to 25? Like, why did dramatic cut to half?
On the, on the canopy, or the
Sorry, the street, the street cover, or the car coverage, carports.
Oh, the, the car coverage?
Yeah.
In terms of how, how it went from 50 to 25?
Yeah, it went from 50 to 25.
Yeah, I, I think we just kind of went back and forth internally as staff in terms of the type of developments that we're getting and the coverage. And so we just thought the 25% was kind of a baseline minimum of what we would want to require. And if they wanted to provide more, that's kind of based on their design and the product that they want to build. And so we thought at least lowering it would preserve the bare minimum of what staff would want to see more of. And then that additional beyond 25% would give the development, developers a little bit more flexibility, provide more if needed.
When, when you did the research, did you look at, like, maybe 30% or anything higher? And I understand that 25% is a minimum, but as we know, if you have the minimum, probably do the minimum. And, and something Mayor Pro Tem mentioned about the, the climate and environment, would folks going to need covered parking or be able to, yeah, have some coverage? So, is there another way, is there another number that we can increase that you feel comfortable with, other than the 25 or maybe a little higher?
Yeah, it's, it's up to council.
It's up to us, okay.
I don't think there's a lot of, like, it's a, it's a somewhat unique standard that, that we have. It's not something you see across the board in cities. I think you see it occasionally, but it's not a, it's not a routine standard that's in, in place. So
Okay, okay.
The percentages and, and all that, I, it, it's preference, basically.
So is what I'm hearing you say is like, after you looked, did the research, you looked at it, you consider what you would want as a minimum, and that's the recommendation of 25. And it's not a, a standard that's consistent in general. So this is the best estimate?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
All right. And this is the last slide here, in terms of those tactical refinements. And so, one feedback we redid, we received last time around was the increased setbacks for higher intensity building forms, such as apartment buildings, mixed-use buildings, and office buildings along arterials and collectors. So those have been increased from 15 to 20 feet, which is the minimum requirement in today's code today. There were also some window requirements for residential buildings and, and, oh, we're sorry, yeah, there were window requirements for residential buildings, and then also industrial buildings as well. We chose to eliminate the window requirements for residential buildings, just because from a market and design perspective, we're controlling for an outcome that isn't really a problem today. And so we got rid of those standards. And then we reduced the overall window requirements for industrial buildings, knowing that they need greater flexibility. So I believe in the previous code, there were about a requirement for 30% transparency windows along the front facade of industrial buildings. We're recommending decreasing that down to about 10%. And the third is, we've heard the desire for additional flexibility for front setbacks for alley-loaded residential products. So, if you recall in the previous presentation I gave out, and I presented in June, I was showing kind of images of more urban residential products that has a shallower front, a lot, a lot setback with alleys loaded in the rear. And so, we reduced the setback to 10 feet for alley-loaded residential products.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble.
Thank you. I have questions about one and three. On number one, why does the 20-foot setback along arterials and collectors only apply to apartments, mixed-use, and office buildings? What about homes that are built along arterials and collectors?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think the code allows for lower-scale homes to be fronting arterials and collectors. So there wasn't a, a need to reduce that. But we'll go back and double-check that for you.
They, homes face 104th?
Well, I mean, that's, you're talking about a current situation. We're talking about moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you've already done something about that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll double-check that. But I, the intent was, the, the feedback we got from this, this conversation last time was that big buildings on the main roads were set, were the, were proposed to be too close to the main roads.
Right.
So we had the 20-foot setback requirement.
Right. That was both, yes. However, if you're driving through beautiful neighborhoods
Yeah.
On major streets, the beautiful neighborhoods, even if their backyards are to the street, have 20-foot setbacks from the street. And when you're driving through older neighborhoods, the fences are right on the sidewalk, and then there's the tree lawn in the street.
Yeah, yeah. So the rear setback, I think, is 20 feet for non-alley-loaded product.
Okay.
So, so if the, the, the single-family homes are backing up to the arterials, they will still have that. And then, to your point, typically there's a, an HOA tract for landscaping and, and aesthetics as well. And that would continue to be encouraged.
Okay. And then the 10-foot front setback for alley-loaded residential products, that's 10 feet from the curb?
That's 10 feet from the property line, which will be set back from, which will be set back from the sidewalk, usually. So it's usually about a foot, the property line's usually a foot behind the sidewalk. The sidewalk, right now, is usually five feet from the curb. We're looking to expand that with the street design requirements. So, under current situations, it would be five feet to the sidewalk, a five-foot sidewalk, and then a foot behind that. And then the setback is applied after that. So in this case, you would be looking at a minimum of 20 feet from the curb, under the current street design standards. With the tree lawn widening, it would be more than that.
Okay. And I literally don't know how long a car is. Is a car 10 feet or less than 10 feet?
Yeah. And so, Sun didn't really describe this, but we currently had, we initially had the rear setback along an alley at 10 feet, which is kind of that in-between space that kind of encourages people to parallel park adjacent to their garage door and start encroaching into the alleyway. So the, so the change was to reduce that 10 feet.
Yeah, to discourage parking.
To what?
To discourage, I think five feet.
To five feet. So you can't physically get a car in there without completely blocking the alleyway. So that's what that adjustment was.
Okay. I support a 10-foot setback to park in the alley. I have many in, in Ward Four, there are many, many complexes and homes that have alleys running through them, and folks need to be able to park in their alleyway, you know, on the apron of the garage in order to get things into their home. You know, it's the same problem with people having full, full garages.
Yeah.
They're not going to park there forever, but they need to be able to have that space. Or deliveries, you know?
Yeah.
You don't have a place to put the Amazon driver, the duplexes.
Yeah.
Need to have at least 10 feet on 104th. I mean, there's just so many areas in Ward Four that need that.
Yeah. And I, I think what you're, you're describing is not the issue, which is the temporary parking and, and potentially temporary encroachment into the alley. It's more along the permanent parking. And so what we were trying to find is a, a middle ground where if somebody wanted to park there for five to 10 minutes to unload groceries and some other stuff, allow, allow that to occur, but don't make it so comfortable that they will park there permanently.
What problem are you trying to solve?
The, the encroachment into, the encroachment into the alley, the unintended blocking of, of the alley there. And so when I, I, I think if, I think we would be looking at a different setback if we're wanting to allow parallel parking versus head-in parking along those alleyways. And what did it say? Maybe it's not five feet, maybe we do eight feet or seven feet or something like that to accommodate what you're talking about. The other issue that we have currently in the city is that a lot of developers are using alleys in lieu of streets. And usually, you have a street and an alley paired together. So you have on-street parking, you have that convenience parking. And then the alley is primarily just for access. But when you eliminate that companion street, you put more pressure on the alley to do things that the alleys aren't designed to do, such as parking and other stuff. And so I think the, the new code, we, we want to make sure that we pair alleys with streets. So we don't have some of these issues that we're seeing in these existing neighborhoods that aren't being designed in that way. They're using alleys to substitute for streets. Does that make sense?
It does, but I don't understand why we can't require streets and then a place for people to park.
Well, they have a garage.
It doesn't, it, in reality, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah.
I just, I'm personally am concerned about anything affecting people using their alleys in order to park for any length of time, because it's common. When you have guests or, I mean, there's a lot of different reasons for needing to do it.
And then Councilmember Dukes had a question, or comment?
Oh, a comment. So going back on the last slide 23, I'm sorry I missed this, but I was looking at it again. With the drip, drip irrigation to be used for foundation planting, can you kind of describe what's the rationale behind that? Or what were you thinking with that one?
Sure. So, if you have foundation plantings around your, the foundation of your commercial building, then you want to use drip irrigation so that you don't have water intrusion into the foundation. So, rather than not allowing foundation plantings or, or not requiring foundation plantings, we found it was more acceptable to say that drip irrigation should be used in conjunction with those foundation plantings.
So if, if someone chooses to do foundation, planting around the foundation, you're recommending, or this is recommended, that they have to do drip irrigation?
Right.
But, so if they choose not to do foundation planting, then no drip irrigation?
Well, the code does require the foundation planting. So this is a new standard.
It's a new standard?
Yeah. For commercial buildings.
And with that, I guess with the requirement of foundation planting, or the drip irrigation, won't it mess with the foundation or cause it to, you don't think so at all, or?
No, that, actually, that's the best practice.
Okay.
Right. When you, when you use non-irrigation, you're spraying water onto the building, basically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and that's the problem. And also, the amount of water that happens in a shorter amount of time is a problem too, because you get water infiltration into the, into an adjacent to the foundation. So drip irrigation is much more water-efficient. It, it delivers the water where it's needed, and the ground can absorb the water flow better. So, so these, these maintenance issues aren't an issue.
So it's a lesser, it's a lesser water flow. But over time, wouldn't it mess with the foundation or no? And I guess I'm asking, can you share the research behind it, or where you got that?
Yeah, if you were to keep your drip irrigation on 24 hours a day, it would be a problem.
But over time, we'll be okay?
Yeah, over, over time, because it allows, it allows the plants to absorb the water as it's being applied.
And you ran this by, like, commercial developers? They're all on board with that as well?
This is where this is coming from, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's pretty much the industry standard. I, the fact that we're putting it in there is kind of like a, it's kind of like, it's going to happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble.
Thank you. Following up on Councilmember Duke's question about the irrigation at the foundation, what about recent studies about wildfires and fires in neighborhood where they actually had plantings setback from the homes instead of at the foundation?
Yeah. And, and we're not talking about residential here, we're talking about commercial. But even so, it, it talks about using fire-resistant species in those foundation plantings. So that was something that was added to the code before the public draft, is we recognize that potential issue, even though it's a commercial structure, which is, tends to be more robust construction. We still saw that as an issue and put that fire-resistant species requirement in there.
Mayor Douglas.
This has to, on page 24, the next, I'm sorry, next, next slide, remove window requirements for residential buildings. What is, what is, what was the current requirement?
We did in the, in the public review draft, but not in the current.
Yeah, the current code doesn't, this is like a minimum percentage of, of, of windows on a front facade. The current code doesn't have that. The draft code introduced it for,
For all of the residential?
For all residential. And so, that percentage was
Parking is 30?
We think 30%.
30%? 30%?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to put type of, I mean, quality windows? Because DIA has changed their flight patterns, and Aurora was called the Airport Park because the planes would fly over from Stapleton, then, and you could, you know, they're allowed, so they had to put in triple-plane windows because there was noise mitigation and all that. So, since we're by the airports, anyway, we can make sure those windows are double-plane windows, or is that not allowed?
Well, so the building code has performance requirements for windows from an energy perspective. I would suggest that the noise issue might be a different topic that we could come back to. I am familiar with communities in airport-influence areas having some sound mitigation requirements in construction of residential uses around that. I think that's a completely different topic, but if, if you want us to put that in the parking lot, we can do that and bring, bring that back for conversation.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Not a parking lot.
The bike closet, yeah. This is, this is the finish line, so.
Thanks for all your feedback tonight. So, as we draw closer to the public hearing process, we wanted to outline in detail how the land development code would be implemented and come into effect. Can we advance one? So we've started by outlining the key steps that all municipalities follow when adopting and making their code effective. Basically, the first step is to adopt the new rules, which were slated, we'll, we've shown you on the schedule, and we'll show you here again in a minute, what the schedule for adoption of the code is. The second step is to make the new rules effective by applying them to properties. It's important to note that just because the new LDC is adopted, it does not mean it becomes effective immediately. Properties zoned under the old land development code are entitled to those rules and standards until they're rezoned under the new land development code. This can be accomplished through a legislative zoning, which is when the city goes out and changes the zoning on the property, even if it's like-for-like, if you're going from I-1 to I-1 in the old code to I-1 in the new code, or if you're changing from C-2 commercial to C-1 commercial. All of those changes have to be adopted through a legislative zoning. Or a property owner could choose to come in and do a rezoning and go under the new code. So in terms of our steps, we're in that first step, we're adopting the new rules. The next step is to do the legislative zoning, and that we anticipate doing in the next year. The third step is to monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of the code and determine whether we need to make tactical changes to the code to address things that we're following or finding in the adoption of the code. So in terms of key considerations for how we will adopt the, and make the new rules effective, in the coming months after we do the public hearing process, we'll look at how we adopt and go through the legislative zoning. We anticipate coming forward to council here in the first quarter of next year with an adoption strategy, and that will give us time to update our software and our fee schedule so that we can accommodate the new development procedures. It will also give us a sound transition period to how we're gonna process the new active applications into the new code. So we need to make this transition. Basically, the other piece of this is that we need to do community engagement related to the legislative rezoning. So when we talk about businesses or property owners having their zoning district changed, even if it's from the old code to the new code, we need to engage with them and talk to them about how that is gonna affect their properties. The land uses might change that are allowed in the zone district now versus the new zone district. And we also need to develop strategies around existing planned unit developments and how those are gonna be treated in the new code. So basically, our recommendation is that we adopt the new land development code and make the code effective upon the first legislative or applicant-driven rezoning. And we may choose to do those legislative zoning in phases. So for instance, we might do the core part of the city first, and then the northern neighborhoods. In sequence, we might, and then we may address the PUDs in a different way. So it's gonna take a lot of discussion with planning commission and city council about how we go about the implementation of this new code, and we want to have a thoughtful and considerate conversation with you all in the first quarter of the year. So basically, here's, we have a general overview of where we move forward. So quarter four of 2025 is the code adoption. Quarter one of 2026 is when we come forward with our legislative rezoning strategy for the council and the planning commission to discuss. And then in quarter two and quarter three of next year, we would do community engagement and have ongoing study sessions with you about the feedback that we're hearing. And then finally, in quarter three and four, we'd do the legislative rezoning and update the engineering manual so that we can have everything in effect for all the properties in Commerce City by the end of next year. Basically, we have short-term, mid-term, and long-term strategies. We will, one option is to repeal and reenact certain sections of the land development code with regard to how do we make certain things that we want to do procedurally, like the preliminary plat or the master, or overall development plan, how do we make that effective right away? And we could do that in a series of ordinance amendments where we enact that into the new, into the current code before the, all the legislative zoning is done. So we have to develop strategies around how we're gonna enact the new code and how we're gonna treat the existing PUDs. And that's the short term. The midterm is to phase in the legislative rezoning for the base districts and better address our unique issues. And update the engineering manual, which we've talked about briefly tonight, in terms of the tree lawn and the other street design specifications. That's in process, but it's not fully, it's not ready to go. So finally, in our, in our long-term strategy, we want to take tactical amendments for maintaining the code and keeping it up to date as we move forward into utilizing the new code. So does, does that make sense, or should I go back over that?
Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
It makes perfect sense. I do want to point out that I made a mistake. It's not Frederick that has the vinyl siding, it's Firestone. All exterior materials shall be of high quality, used in applications, and treated appropriately to provide an attractive and long-lasting appearance. Vinyl siding, pressboard, and exterior insulating and finish systems are prohibited. And I wrote that in a note November 14, 2022. So I'm asking, when does this vinyl thing go into action, and how do we make it happen sooner? Because I'm seeing it happen not until the end of 2025.
Yeah, that's, that's a great, that's a great real-world example.
For 2026?
Yeah, that's a great real-world example of how the implementation strategy might unfold. And so, in that first, in that first bullet point, the short-term items, one of the options that we're wanting to prepare are, are there certain sections of the new code that we want to implement sooner without waiting for the legislative rezoning? And so vinyl siding could be one of those topics. And if that's the case, then what we would do is prepare a separate amendment to the existing, the 2009 LDC. So we're gonna have the 2025 LDC and the 2009, where we would add those provisions into the existing code. And the example that Heather was also pointing out is that there's a lot of, even in, with our customers, there's a lot of interest in introducing the preliminary plat process for all the positive reasons that we've talked about in getting projects in front of council. And so that might be another section that we want to pull the trigger sooner. And so our approach allows us to identify those, those key aspects that we want to adopt sooner rather than later and present a strategy to do so. So that's gonna be part of the conversation, like, to get that going, yeah.
And you brought up something else, which is the preliminary plat. The only concern that I'm left with about the preliminary plat is that if all of that is signed off on by the public at the preliminary plat level, then nothing can change after that. Because if it changes after that, then that means that the public is left out of the discussion regarding the project.
Yeah, and that's the criteria, that's the criteria for final plat approvals, is that it's gotta be consistent with the preliminary plat. I don't know the nuances, but usually there's a, there's a little technical wiggle room, like, within a certain, certain things can change for very technical reasons, like, a property line can shift a couple of feet, or the roadway could slightly be realigned because of unexpected conditions in the field or unexpected conditions in the design. So there is, there's usually a minor, and I think we have this, a minor flexibility part, but if there's wholesale changes or significant changes outside of that, it would have, they would have to come back and amend the preliminary plat through the public process.
And we could weigh in at that point, then?
Absolutely.
All right.
Councilmember Dukes.
Just thank you for the timeline and overview, and just a comment, thank you all for the time. This is such a lengthy, in-depth process, but you did such a great job communicating it, make sure we asked the questions, so I appreciate your effort and your time.
Mayor Douglas.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to, since, since we had the discussion about the vinyl, it went out to the builders, developers, and we came back with that information. It'd be nice if we could go through that process of having the hearing or resolution, whatever it's gonna be, you know, in October, and then, because it's gonna take a couple hearings or readings, and have that done before November, that portion. Because it's been on the table for a long time, just, just, just to kind of clean it up.
So you want to advance the vinyl, the vinyl implementation sooner rather than later?
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm requesting.
Okay, and is that a general consensus with council? Okay, I'm not seeing that, so...
Well, I think we should go around, because we did, there was eight that said we wanted it, so I think we should go around room and ask. Well, just, just the steps to get this passed. Yes.
Or, or at least as part of the initial adoption, yeah.
Is everybody okay with that?
So we would have a separate ordinance related to vinyl siding that would amend the current 2009 land development code, and we could run that parallel with the adoption of the 2025 land development code. And so you could make it effective immediately if it amended the existing code.
Yeah, so we've, we've gotta create the language for the new code anyways, and so pulling that language out and putting it in a separate ordinance is a fairly low lift, is what I'm...
Yeah, I think that's right. What I would recommend, if we're gonna do that, is at a council meeting, notice council business item it, so that we're not spinning our wheels, right, and drafting an ordinance for this purpose, and then it, you know, it doesn't actually get the movement that this, this group thinks it's going to get. I think just having the conversation, should be a 10-minute conversation at most. That way I can give direction to Elliot, we can touch base with CD, and actually spend time on that, you know, as a priority item now.
Absolutely.
I'll wait.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair Bill Toff for overseeing this meeting. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank the staff for the presentation and for the council members who were here tonight for participating in our meeting, and it was a, I think it was a very fruitful meeting. So just in, just in matter of process for this evening, is there any attorney business we didn't need to discuss? As we don't have a typical, we'll have a regular scheduled meeting, and this is our regular meeting, is there any?
No, that's, there's not. I think getting the direction on, you know, fast-tracking an ordinance is, would be really helpful for us. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any additional staff business?
No, sir.
Is there any addition, additional commission business? Seeing none, the time, yes, Mayor Douglas.
Yes, sorry, I didn't, just wanted to say thank you everyone for participating. I like this feedback, because last time we had it, didn't hear much from planning, and you have the ability to do that. And if we have to be in your arena for you guys to just speak up, I'm good with that, too. But no, when you're in our arena, I want to hear from you guys.
Well, and to that point, so I'll just bring this up, since you're all in the forum. So one thing that we've discussed, just as part of our, it was our, we had a planning meeting at the beginning of the year, and we were talking about agenda items just as a commission of what we wanted to do. So we've had trainings, things of that sort. But another thing that we want to have with you all is a meeting just to talk about what your vision is for us, and just to come to the table, so we all can talk about things.
That would be great.
And we would want to do that moving into the first quarter of next year. So that's just all on your radar, but that's something that we want to, to get with you all. So we've engaged staff in there, it's on their radar, so we'll get it on the calendar.
Thank you.
We need a vision conversation, too.
Yeah. So on that point, the time is now 9:03, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.